Thank you. Good morning, everyone. And I'd like to call the meeting to order and start with our land acknowledgement. As we gather this morning, I would like to acknowledge on behalf of council and our community that we are meeting on the traditional territory of the First Nations. We would like to thank the Algonquin people and express our respect and support for their rich history. We are extremely grateful for their many and continued displays of friendship. We also thank all the generations of people who have taken care of this land for thousands of years. And if you could please stand for a moment of silent reflection and O'Canada.
And Mr. Kelly, if you could conduct the roll call, please.
Thank you, Warden, and good morning. Counselor Bennett. Counselor Bros.
Present.
Counselor Doncaster. Counselor Donahue.
Here.
Or Nemo.
Present.
Counselor Giardini.
Present.
Counselor Grills.
Present.
Counselor Yon.
Present.
Counselor Lynch.
Here.
Counselor McKenzie.
Present.
Counselor Mayville.
Present.
Counselor Murphy. Counselor Nicholson.
Here.
Counselor Service.
Here.
Counselor Watt.
Present.
Counselor Weir.
Here.
Counselor Wilmer.
Present.
Warden, you have quorum.
Thank you very much. Is there any disclosure of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Seeing none, thank you. And if I could have a motion for the adoption of the minutes of September 27, 2023. Mover is the member from the township Killarney-Heggie-Richards, and second is the member from the township of North Algonquin-Wilberforce. Discussion? That's quite a mouthful to start off, thank you. And we could have went with Armpire and somebody else. Thank you very much. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None is carried? Thank you.
To members of county council, during the month of April, I attended 11 meetings on county business. On September 28, I attended a meeting with the Ontario Home Builders Association of Canada to discuss the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus Regional Housing Plan, Seven in Seven, and they have since sent a letter of strong endorsement for the plan. On October 3, I attended a City of Penbrook Council meeting along with EORN Representative Jim Pine and CAO Craig Kelly to discuss the same housing strategy, and we received support from the city as well. Recently, the installation of new barriers on the Algonquin Trails MTO overpass was completed. On October 6, we celebrated the partnership with the Ontario Federation of Snowmobile Clubs, who contributed $50,000 to this project. I participated in a research project on October 9 with Queen's University regarding the governance model of EORN. Their goal was to understand how the governance model has enabled EORN to grow and whether this model might be used in other economic sectors beyond broadband. You will note that was Thanksgiving Monday. When they called me asking to set up a time, I thought, oh, I've got this big gap on Monday. So the big gap was between family dinners, so that went really well with my management team at home. On October 12, Counselor Giardini, on my behalf, attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony at Le Colle Elementaire Catholique de la Rivière in Armpire and was able to dust off her French to quote her, to deliver a welcome message to the new childcare center. So thank you very much for that. On October 13, I joined a meeting with the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus with Western Ontario MPs and MPVs to discuss mutual priorities and collaboration opportunities between levels of government. I also attended the Roma Board meeting that day as well. On October 16 and 17, the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus met on Parliament Hill with members of parliament regarding many of the counties across the region. Sorry, they were representing many of the counties. Our roundtable discussion concentrated on the regional strategies for long-term care, paramedic services, and providing affordable and attainable housing for our workers and our most vulnerable. Separately, we held meetings with MP Scott Acheson and NDP housing critic Jenny Kwan to discuss the regional housing plan. These two days were extremely rewarding and offered an excellent opportunity to showcase Eastern Ontario to our federal representatives. October 18 and 19, I attended the Bonchar Manor and Miramichi Lodge volunteer appreciation events with Chair Donahue and CAO Craig Kelly. The attendance of both events was a testimony to the value of our volunteers, who have provided dedication and time to ensure there is a warm, caring environment, which creates a sense of community for our residents. So thank you to our volunteers of both of those homes. As part of Nuclear Science Week, the Chalk River Labs celebrated the New Science Collaboration Center and hosted a fascinating documentary on nuclear energy on October 19. On behalf of council, I wish to extend our sincere condolences to the former chief of the Algonquins of Piquet-Watnamgon First Nation, Wendy Jaco, on the passing of her son, James Scott McMullin, who passed away on October 14. On November 11, we will commemorate the men and women who have served Canada's military during the Remembrance Day events throughout the county. I encourage everyone to take part in a local event. I will remind those assembled this morning of the following: The county of Renfrew, experience our history, share our future. This concludes my address for this session of county council. It gives me a great deal of pleasure to introduce our next, or our first delegation, I'm sorry, Jamie Brandberger, who is the manager of Community and Student Affairs, and Sarah Hall, the dean from Algonquin College. Jamie is no stranger to many of us, and Sarah is well-known to us as well. I've sat through a number of their presentations and on various committees with them, so I'm quite familiar, always engaging and informative. So thank you very much for being here this morning.
Good morning, everyone. Well, thank you so much for allowing us to come here today to give you a presentation. It's really an honor. So thank you, Warden, and thank you to all the members of county council. My first time here. Certainly, I've been in the dean role at the campus for about a year and a half now, so still figuring out how things work. Lucky for me, an amazing team of people that work as well with me, including Jamie, who's no stranger here. So just a couple of things about what's going on at the college, and Jamie's going to take you through some of the details. This is a really significant time of growth for us, and I would say that growth is really in the area of international students. And this is the same information that I have shared with many of our partners. It's creating some really interesting pressures for us, but also creating a really amazing environment for all of our students. And so we have about between 200 and 300 international students expected to be on our campus in the next couple of semesters. If we reflect on where we've come from in 2017, our numbers were in the single digits. So we have really made a lot of growth in that area. We've also certainly extended our outreach to our partners, and so Jamie will also speak to some of those partnerships. But in particular, I'll emphasize certainly our partnerships with our military partners at Petawawa and our recent signing of our memorandum of collaboration. And we'll speak a little bit more about that as well. And we are also anticipating in the next few days to be signing a memorandum of collaboration with Natural Resources Canada with respect to some collaborative work that we will be doing at Petawawa Research Forest. So the effort has been really to foster those connections, to create some really wonderful opportunities for our students. I want to thank all of you. For those of you that have children, that have eventually ended up in our doors, for those of you that have partnered with us on different projects, for those of you that have reached out to your different communities and allowed our students to be on your property or to experience different learning opportunities with you. It's really this community that makes Algonquin College a really special place. And I am really proud to live in Laurentian Valley and really proud to represent the college. And I know that there are still some wonderful things to come. So thank you for always welcoming us as part of the community. So I'll turn it over to Jamie to walk you through some of the slides, and I'll probably jump in in a few places to make a few comments.
Trying to do my juggling act without spilling water over both of us. That would be embarrassing. Good morning, everyone. It has been a while since I've been here, probably pre-pandemic, but it's nice to see members of county council and to be able to share with you an update on where things are at. We certainly have what we call a town-and-gown relationship with the city of Pembroke, as that is the host community where we are. And some of the comments that I'll make and some of the information I'll share, Sarah talked about pressure points, and I'll be sharing some of those things that primarily within the city, but I think certainly for the communities that surround the city of Pembroke, like Laurentian Valley, some of those things extend to your areas as well. So we wanted to bring those up. So we'll talk a little bit about what's new, an enrollment update, some strategic priorities, both for the college as well as our Students' Association, which is the governing body that represents all of the students that study at Algonquin College, and in this case, particularly our campus. I want to talk a little bit about labor market trends. Sarah mentioned, teased out that we've had a significant increase in international enrollments. I want to share with you why I think that's really, really important moving forward for this region and partnership opportunities we'll discuss as well. First part, though, some community contributions. And I just pulled a few out last night when I was finalizing this presentation. This is one of our forestry technician students from a couple of years ago, when they were planting up to 30,000 trees in Algonquin Park. That's a lot of trees. But we were doing that with our forestry tech students. They've certainly done a forest of hope in the Beachburg area as well. We've had water sampling done by our environmental technician students on the Muskrat Lake watershed around algae blooms in that space. Nursing students were frontline during the COVID-19 pandemic at the many clinics that were happening throughout Renfrew County, and they were supporting that effort. Our Police Foundation students are always volunteering at different events and fairs and, you know, lumber king games and things like that. So just a couple of examples to reinforce the point that college is a practical education, and we rely on partnerships to create these types of experiences for students so they get real-life work experience. What's new? We've created a new Indigenous medicine wheel garden. That was informed. We have a campus Kokum as well as a campus elder, Amy Bailey, who some of you probably are very, very familiar with from the Circle of Turner Lodge, was part of that. This was a ceremony back in June. That's one of our Indigenous students who is speaking in the heart of that medicine wheel garden, which is on our property. You may or may not be familiar with an Ontario government initiative called Learn and Stay. Because of the critical shortage of healthcare workers within the province, the Ontario government last year and is continuing this year is offering free tuition to some students in healthcare programs. For us, it means practical nursing and the four-year Bachelor of Science in Nursing degree. The condition is, is that the student is successful in their program, and they agree to spend six months in the communities, the region where they were trained, for every year of study. So if you're in the four-year degree, it means you're going to work for two years in the region that you were trained as a registered nurse. It's a great, great deal. If the students don't fulfill that mandate, then the grants turn into student loans, and they have to pay it back. Otherwise, it is free tuition for them. So I think we all know, in particular, long-term care and the shortage of personal support workers. Unfortunately, PSW is not part of that program, but, you know, that's where we're bringing in some international students, but we know there are shortages of nurses as well. This will be of interest to any municipality that has a wastewater treatment facility. Starting in fall 2024, the Water and Wastewater Technician Program, which had been offered at the Ottawa campus, is being moved to the Pembroke campus. And we will be looking for opportunities for students to get real-life work experience within those treatment plants. So if you have a treatment plant, we would like to hear from you. And that's certainly for field trips and things like that. That will be very, very helpful. Multimodal is something that came out of the pandemic when we were all forced to move online. We now have some programs where students have the choice every single day, whether they come on campus or they join us by Zoom. They still have the same schedule as a student who comes on campus, but they can actually take their course in whatever modality they like, flexible learning. And you're going to see more of that moving forward. But our business program is an example of where students have that choice. So if it's a bad weather day, they can stay in their pajamas and they can stay at home. But if it's a day where they're not feeling well, they can do it that way as well. But they can do that every day of the week, if that's their choice. We're going to talk a little bit about an enhanced collaboration with the Canadian Armed Forces. I'm very pleased that Colonel Jason Guinea is here from the Garrison. I think he'll probably build on what I share with you, and as Sarah said, international enrollments and the growth there. So this is a snapshot of what our enrollments looked like this fall. So some of you may have heard me present before, when we talk about 900 to 1,000 full-time students that study at the Pembroke campus every year. All of those enrollments used to be front-end loaded. It meant that fall was our primary intake. It's changed now. So now it's still the bulk of our intake, but now we have more intakes in January, in our winter term, and we have one intake in the spring as well. So what we've done is to take some pressure off of our building, because it's really full in the fall, we've diversified where our intakes are. And it just means the building is busier 12 months a year. So that creates other pressures, but it doesn't have as much pressure on space as we were experiencing. So this past fall, there were 772 students that started with us. At the start of September, 720 of those were full-time. 615 were domestic or Canadian students, and 105 students were international. And I'll show you where they came from in just a moment. Of that group, there were 430 first-year students, and this is interesting. We are a destination campus. We have a lot of unique programs that are not offered at other college campuses in the province, or the country for that matter in some cases. So we rely on out-of-town students, both domestic and international, to allow us to hit our enrollment targets. That is becoming more challenging because of domestic, because of demographic shifts. And I'll speak a little bit about what's happening here in Renfrew County. So you can see now, 51% of our students are local. That includes the Pontiac, and 49% are coming from outside of this area. So there's obviously an economic infusion that comes with that when you think of those dollars that are spent on things like housing, food, entertainment by our out-of-town student population. We had 16 program intakes in the fall and five more coming up in the winter. This will, I think, be of interest to you. I've just kind of clustered these. I didn't break it into all 17 municipalities, because I don't think I would have had enough slides had I done that. But this is where that first-year group is coming from. So the bulk is from Pembroke and Laurentian Valley, again, you know, place-based, close to home. 86 of those 420 students were from those two municipalities. Eganville, Killaloo, Golden Lake, you've got 30 coming from there. The town of Petawawa, 25, and we expect that number will grow based on our new partnership with the military. The Renfrew area, about 23. Whitewater Region, 17. Deep River, Chalk River, 15. Pontiac County, 10. Berry's Bay, Matawaska, 8. Armpire, Calabogie, Greater Matawaska, 6. That group, not surprisingly, migrates more to the Ottawa campus, a little bit closer four-lane highway, but we still are getting students from across the district, which is the point that I want to make. This is your community college. It happens to be in Pembroke, but this is a Renfrew County institution. The 73 first-year international students. So a lot of people think of international students primarily coming from India, and that is, in fact, the case. But look at all of the other countries that these students are coming from. China, nine. Six from Nigeria, four from Ghana, three from the Philippines, three from Uganda, three from Kenya, three from Rwanda. That's not the entire list. There's onesies and twosies in there as well. But we are bringing the world to Renfrew County. And that is important moving forward, because if we can train these students here, the end game is immigration to Canada for them. If we can create the employment opportunities for them when they graduate, we have a much better chance to fill those labor market gaps that are going to become more profound moving forward. For the winter 2024 intake, we have approximately 150 students right now that have paid fees. 140-plus of those students are international students that are going to be joining us in the midst of a Canadian winter, many of whom have never experienced temperatures below 20 degrees Celsius. So we have things like winter coat drives. We do a lot of work reaching out to them in advance to try to see if they have housing sorted out. And I think we all know, and the warden mentioned, the new initiative through the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, but housing is obviously a concern. And that is something that we continue to work on, but we are blessed in that we have five privately-owned and operated student residences in the city of Pembroke that provide more than 200 student beds. Some of those beds will become available because we have programs that are graduating out in December. So the five intakes in the winter, practical nursing and personal support worker, we're offering those intakes twice, fall and winter because of the labor shortages. And the international students are helping us make sure that we hit our enrollment projections. But we're also offering environmental management assessment, geographical information systems, and computer programming in the winter. Do you want to jump in with anything, or do you want me to keep going? Okay. Gives me a chance to get a drink of water.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. One of the questions that we sometimes get, certainly broadly at the college, so not just at our campus, obviously, I work in very close collaboration with what we call the mothership. One of the questions that we get here certainly is, are the international students taking seats away from domestic students? And this is certainly something that we want to keep a careful watch on. The short answer is no. The answer is that we really have enough seats in all of our programs for any domestic students that want to come into those programs. So that is specifically my answer for this campus. So we actively recruit for and encourage our local students and domestic students from this country to come and take programs at the Pembroke campus. And those are a very important group for us. But we know, we know that those numbers are declining. And so overall, the college, and when I say that, I mean overall, including Ottawa campus and our campus at Perth, overall, we are not anticipating any growth in domestic students in the next five years. Our growth is almost entirely going to be related to recruiting and securing more international students. So I just wanted to give you that assurance that it would be very unlikely for me to hear that there was a student who wanted to get in a program and that seat was being taken by a student from out of this country. That is simply not the case at the Pembroke campus. And so I think that's really important for everyone to understand from a local context. So thank you for that.
And that's an excellent segue to the next slide, which explains why that is the case. We are aging in Renfrew County. You know that. But the national census data from 21, you know, really hammers home the point. So about 25% of Renfrew County's population is now over 65. But the next biggest group, the over 50 group, is about 45% of our population. We just, there aren't enough young people in the region. Petawawa is an anomaly, and thank goodness for the military, because you've got a younger population there with an average age of about 32. But the median age in Pembroke is 46.4, and in the county it's 45.2, and the average age in Ontario is 41.6. So as a society, we are getting older. The international students that we bring to this community are young, and they have a pathway to be immigrants to this country for the most part. So there is an opportunity here. And we've seen declining enrollments in the high schools for many, many years. That obviously affects our marketplace and our ability to attract local students. And that's why we have created a number of unique programs that do allow us to bring students in from outside of the area. Okay, I just wanted to share a few. Our Students' Association, which is an entity on its own, representing the 25,000 or so Algonquin College students, sets priorities every year. So I wanted to just share three of those six priorities that they have set up for your awareness. So their first priority is student housing. And one thing you should be aware of, Algonquin College has now initiated a housing strategy for students moving forward. As I said, we do have five privately-owned and operated student residences, which is very, very helpful for us. But like every level of government, the college is also interested in affordable housing because of the reliance we have on out-of-town student populations. So we'll be watching very closely the Eastern Ontario Warden Caucus initiative around affordable housing and what that does to the housing market locally, because that is important to us for our growth projections. The fourth priority, there are six, I've jumped to number four here, is around international students. And one of the pillars of this priority for students is to ensure around diversity, equity, and inclusion, that our international students are fully integrated, not only in our campus community, but in our broader community. And equity, diversity, inclusion is a priority. And the college sees itself as a leader in rural areas such as ours with the growth that we've had in international. As I said, we're bringing people from around the world, and we want them to have a great experience, not only at the college, but also in the community, and share, you know, share a favorable light on what rural Canada has to offer to them. And we do have examples, by the way, where we have graduates who have come here from other destinations, and they have remained in this region. And they are working now in our hospitals and in our businesses. I'm thinking of a couple. I'm looking at Gary, and I'm remembering about a BSCN graduate a few years ago, who is now a nurse practitioner, working in your health clinic in Petawawa. I'm thinking about Deep River, a young man who came to us from Ukraine before the war broke out in Ukraine, and is now working in the IT department at the Deep River Hospital. So we do have those examples, which is really, really great, that they're helping fill some of those spaces that are available on the labor market. And the number six priority was transportation. The city of Pembroke is certainly doing some research on the potential for public transit, but that is something that continually comes up. As we grow our international student population, these students do not have access to a vehicle when they come here. So it's foot traffic primarily. Some will get bikes. Housing, therefore, becomes really, really critical to have them close to the campus, but they work in our community. And many of them are right now filling the service jobs that are not being filled by more traditional, you know, Canadians that have grown up in this area. And so if you go to some of these gas stations and convenience stores, you'll see many of our international students working there. Why? Because international tuition is much higher than domestic tuition, and they want Canadian work experience. So they are a gift. I say that to everyone around labor market shortages in those roles. I'll let Sarah just speak to this next slide, just around our most recent collaboration with Garrison Petawawa.
Thank you, Jamie. So this one is near and dear to my heart. That's why Jamie gave me the control of the mic here. So acknowledging that Commander Guinea is here today. We have a very wonderful relationship, lots of collaboration. We actually had a phone call yesterday and do have regular communication back and forth. This memorandum of collaboration has essentially led to some pretty key initiatives for us already, and I suspect that will lead to many more initiatives that we work on together. So just this morning, I had the opportunity to go and meet some of the new students on our campus who are taking part in a course that is essentially designed for transitioning members from the military to come to post-secondary. And so
And so Jamie and his team applied for some funding for this course, and we were given those resources. And so what has happened is we've actually built a training opportunity, and we have four students participating in that. So these are folks that have left the military or are in the process of leaving the military for various different reasons, and we are welcoming them at our campus and trying to give them a real sense of what life is like in a post-secondary institution. And we have an ex-military member who's actually teaching that course. He is actually teaching for the first time. It's creating a really wonderful dynamic. He brings a whole bunch of experience to the table, and I, and just this morning when I met them all, already having a really wonderful discussions and collaborations. So very excited to provide that opportunity. And in addition, Jamie and his team also secured some funding to provide some training to military spouses. And so over the next few months, we will actually be delivering some aspects of our academic upgrading program up on Base Petawawa to many military spouses who are interested in furthering their education. In addition to that, we're also trying to build our capacity to better account for military experience in terms of giving credit where credit is due and recognizing that many of our military members bring a whole wealth of experience to the table that would allow them to gain exemptions for many of our courses. And so we're really working hard to, to build on those pathways. So it is a wonderful relationship. I think the memorandum of collaboration was a signature on a line, but really this growth has been going on for a number of years, and I think that that just signifies our ongoing commitment between our two, our two organizations. So, so thank you for that. Thank you too, Commander Guinea, for making that happen.
I'm going to finish up just with a couple of small, well, they're not small, they're a lot of work actually. But for some reason, it seems to have frozen on me. Ah, there we go, there we go. This is not a small event, I shouldn't have referred to it as that. The Fall Business Leadership Conference, which is something we started about 10 years ago, is actually happening tomorrow, and I've noticed in some of the registrations that some of the municipalities that are here, some of your staff are represented in our registrations, they will be participating. But I highlight this because there is an economic impact to this conference. We have people that come to the conference, and certainly some of our presenters are from out of town, they're staying in local hotels, there's some investments being made there around meals and things like that. But more importantly, this is a professional development opportunity for local businesses that is affordable without having to go to Toronto, or Ottawa, or Kingston, or Montreal to access it. And look at some of the people that are going to be here tomorrow. Elizabeth Manley, a former Olympian, is going to be here talking about mental health in the workplace. The Chief Climatologist for Environment Canada, David Phillips, is going to be talking about how weather affects the workplace and our moods, and how productive we can be. Retired General David Fraser, who of course we've got a significant military connection, he's the CTV National News Military Analyst, he will be here talking about leadership in the digital age, he just wrote a new book about that. And resiliency expert Dr. Robin Hanley-Defoe, who is coming from San Francisco to Pembroke, Ontario. She speaks at conferences across North America. This professional development opportunity is about $300 a person. Now think about what that would cost if you were going out of town. And we're bringing these great presenters plus a series of workshops. So I hope moving forward, you will take that message back to your municipalities around supporting the conference, because it really is a big city conference right here at home. And it does provide quality professional development opportunities for our local business community and organizations. And it's so great to be back. We, we had to do it virtual for a few years during the pandemic, so it's really nice to, to have it as a face-to-face experience. So I'll conclude there, just a quick update on some of the things that are happening at the Pembroke campus, but Sarah and I are very happy to take any questions if there is time, Warden Emo.
There is, thank you very much. Questions, comments? The member from the township of Killaloo-Haggy Richards, please.
Thank you Chair. Thank you Sarah and Jamie for your presentation, it was very informative. It is a secret to many kids in our, in the outlying areas. And I'd like to deal on recruitment policy. High school students, I'm aware that you do try to recruit at the high school level, and probably grades 11 and 12, I'm assuming. Have you given thought to starting earlier, as in grade seven and eight? Because we have a tendency in rural areas, they hear right away, right off the bat, I want to go to North Bay to get a teaching degree, I want to go to Western, I want to go to a bigger city where they can, it's easier to find a part-time job to support while they're on campus at school. I'm just, curiosity, would you be interested in hitting the sevens and eights and starting that recruitment policy even earlier? And especially with the way the phones are, the internet is, like, everyone's talking about something. So that was my question.
I'll start on this, and Sarah may want to add to this commentary. You are correct in that we, you know, much of our time is spent with grade 12s in particular, and grade 11 students, but we also appeal to a mature student, mature student audience, we make presentations at employment services spaces, we go to career fairs, job fairs, and not just here at home, across the province. We've had recruiters that have been on the road for the last five weeks in every section of Ontario as part of what is known as the College Information Program. But to address your question around younger age groups, this is what we have branded at the Pembroke campus this week, Go to College Week. We have about 125 grade 10 students actually on campus right now that are participating in a junior achievement activity called World of Choices, which is around career exploration. On Friday, we have a brand-new event called Jill of All Trades, that is for grade 9 to grade 12 girls who are interested in experiencing skilled trades careers such as electrical, carpentry, arborist. They'll be participating in workshops all day. We spend a lot of time with career classes, which are at the grade 10 level, so we do presentations at all of our local high schools. And we do have some select activities that go to grade 7s and 8s. Option Skilled Trades Fair would be an example. It is targeted at grade 10, but we also have a group of grade 7s and 8s that attend that every year as well, it's held every spring. And that event brings in somewhere between 1,500 and 1,800 high school students from our region every year. So there is some work being done at that level, but yes, we do primarily focus on grade 11 and 12. Mostly that's because of resources and the size of our recruitment team.
There's not much to add there. Jamie has a good sense of everything that's going on. I guess I would just add the Specialist High Skills Major Program. I know that that's predominantly grade 11 and grade 12, but also that program does engage students that are in grade 9 and grade 10 as well. And so that is an opportunity that's offered at the, at the high school level, but we do as a college play some role in providing opportunities for those students to have experiences at the, at the college level. So we're always interested in exploring other opportunities to get into those lower-grade levels, absolutely. Definitely grade 11 and grade 12 is sort of the target area, but historically, we've run a number of, of different events trying to engage those youth. And I think it's, it's always a really wonderful time to provide the youth with a bit of an insight as to what their various different options are and what some of their local options are. We know that they probably haven't decided at that time, they may not even have decided by the time they get to grade 12, and they probably haven't even decided by the time they get to us. But providing a bit of breadth in terms of giving them, those students, some exposure to their options here certainly is, is something that we look, we look for. So always open to exploring some of those opportunities as well. Thank you for asking that question.
Thank you, and the member from Laurentian Hills, and then Killaloo-Haggy Richards.
Thank you. As an Algonquin grad, from the mothership, I welcome you here.
Sorry, North Algonquin.
I think I heard you mention, Jamie, that you give, there are incentives for the nursing course. Have you given consideration to the PSW with such a critical shortage in PSWs? And I'm thinking, like in our area, with that 96-bed long-term care home that's going to Deep River, my concern is that we won't have enough people to work there.
There were some accelerated programs offered in the last few years that were, that were free tuition programs in PSW, those have stopped right now. The Learn and Stay Grant was a new initiative last year. So right now, students are paying tuition to come into those programs. But what I will say is, we have a very generous community. Our campus alone hands out about $250,000 a year in bursary money. That is free money for students to help pay for their educational investment. And those bursaries can range from $250 to the high end of $4,000. So one of the things I want to leave you with is that while students do pay tuition, and it is an investment in their future, there is a lot of financial aid support to help them if, if they indeed need financial support. So, and, and at the end of the day, it may be a first step to go to college, there's lots of articulation agreements to go to university, to go to a higher level of education. But colleges are designed to be community-based and to respond to labour market needs. And we've got lots of opportunities for students, and we've got a labour market that needs college graduates. So it's a short-term investment of both time and financials with financial aid help available for a very good career.
Thank you, and I should, prior to, just, I'll step in in front of my friend from North Algonquin. The county of Rentfrew has partnered with Algonquin College in the past for PSWs, with them located right in, in our homes, with the instruction and the practicals. So it has been something that's been, been utilized by us in the past, and I'm sure we'll be doing more in the future.
If I could just make one comment on PSW. So traditionally, we've only offered one intake of PSW at the college, and we were watching the numbers very closely. It's surprisingly become a higher-demand program for international, very difficult to attract domestic students. So this winter, Jamie mentioned, but I wanted to emphasize, we have an intake of PSW which we have not had before, and they are primarily international students. So really trying to bring those students here and recognizing that we do have those shortages. The Learn and Stay Grant is a provincial grant, so it's not something that the, the college itself offers. So, so just to, just to make sure that that is clear, certainly we would welcome if the province came up with another grant for PSWs. And the, and the last, the last comment I would make is, we do watch very closely sort of what those labour market needs are. We also acknowledge that college has costs associated with it for students. Students can apply for student loans, and they are typically very successful. But I also wanted to share with you that tuition at the colleges in Ontario has been frozen since 2016. So students are paying exactly what they paid in the 2016, 2017 year, which itself is a bit of a challenge from a college financial perspective. I'm sure you can understand that. But we feel as a college system that the, the tuition is really reasonable, and certainly students do have an opportunity to leverage those transfer of credits to, to different levels, especially in the health sector. Last piece I will add is we are exploring a pathway from PSW to PN, which we are anticipating we'll be bringing forward at the college. So that is not a credential, more it's an upgrading program that will allow PSWs that we currently have to be able to upgrade their credentials to, to be P, Practical Nurses. And we are also exploring a pathway for Practical Nurses to be able to go into our BSCN program. So working really hard with the mothership on this one to identify those opportunities for, for those transitions and those growths, those personal growth opportunities for, for folks. So thank you for your question, I know the health sector is very challenging, and we're doing our best to try to bring people here to help fill those gaps.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience, North Algonquin.
Thank you, Warden. And more of a comment than a question, I just wanted to say and acknowledge the importance of Algonquin College in our communities and also for our municipalities. Just want to highlight a couple of areas where the college and the students have really helped in our municipality. We have the Wilkins Trail, and we worked with the college and the environmental technician and management students where they did the environmental assessment on the trail, presented an excellent presentation to council. Secondly, we have one of the highlights and major attractions in our municipality being Shaw Woods. And again, I want to thank the forestry class and students who helped this fall with some major overgrowth clearing on those trails. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
With that, I see the member from Arnhem Prior, and the member from McNabry Side.
Thank you, Warden. The word student means school to me. How many people are the older generation that are coming to Algonquin College to further a degree or get, get a better life, I guess I'll say?
Yeah, the majority of our students range from 17 to 25, that's the core group. They don't, only one out of four comes directly from high school. Majority have gone into the workplace, may have tried a different, like a university program and then come to us. But our students can range up to 55, 60 years of age, and it really depends on the program. So for example, social service worker often attracts students who have some life experience and are interested in giving back into a helping career. That demographic in that program, you're not going to get as many young people, you're going to get a more mature student audience. If it's a program like Police Foundations, it skews younger, young folks that want to become police officers primarily. So it really depends, but the range is 17 to 55, 60 sometimes in our full-time programs.
Thank you. The second question, Warden, would be, nursing was four years in a PM?
Practical nursing, which is a registered practical nurse is a two-year diploma, registered nurse is a four-year degree offered in collaboration with the University of Ottawa.
Thank you.
And personal support worker is an eight-month certificate.
Thank you, McNabry Side.
Thank you, so thank you very much, sorry, thank you Chair. Thanks, Jamie and Sarah, for this presentation and this update. Full disclosure, my son is enjoying his experience at Algonquin right now.
Excellent.
And so my, my question is regarding the trades. So very pleased to hear the incentives to, to help fill the gaps in, in the healthcare field, but as we all know, the, the province has a very large mandate, self-imposed, to build 1.5 million homes in the next 10 years. And I'm just wondering if there's anything similar in terms of incentives to get students into the trades so that we can fulfill that need?
The trades programs are doing very well. There's good, solid interest in those programs. So we run a, a full-time Carpentry and Renovations Techniques program, it's an eight-month certificate. It has been wait-listed, that means we have more demand than seats that we have for that program, which is really driven by the size of our shops for the last probably three or four years now. So it's, it's very solid. We also offer Level 1, 2, and 3 of the Carpentry trade, and we also offer Level 1 of the Electrical trade. Those programs have been, as, Electrical's down a little bit this year, but the, the construction trades programs have been very, very strong the last few years, and that's helping feed not only what has been a pretty robust real estate market and new housing market in places like Petawawa and Arnhem Prior in particular the last few years, but through the whole county. And if these initiatives around affordable housing really start to get some traction, there's going to be even more demand for those careers. So as Sarah said earlier, we're always looking at what the labour market demands are and making decisions like, do we need to add new sections, either because of pent-up demand or need within the community? And personal support worker and practical nursing getting a second intake in January is an example of that because of healthcare labour shortages. So I hope that answers the question. Okay.
Thank you. Member from Petawawa, please.
Thank you Chair, through you, and thank you Jamie and Sarah for the presentation and for all you do for the community. You spoke about an aging population, and we here in the municipal world are facing an aging workforce, that's a large portion of them are set to retire in the next few years. Is there anything Algonquin and other colleges are doing in terms of offering a training programs for municipal-type jobs? And I know AORs is advocating right now for a Public Works course. Is Algonquin tracking that and getting set to offer anything in those fields?
This is a conversation, Mayor, sort of, that, that is not new to us. We've had, and I can't, I'm trying to go through my head, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, you have a training program that's built right in, and the name is escaping me right now.
It's the MAP, MAP.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. So, we have had conversations with that group around a partnership. It has not come to fruition, probably because they deliver the training. But at one point, they were interested in going deeper with us in some sort of partnership. I think, in fairness, and Sarah, you can add to this, but there would need to be critical mass, and it would have to be a financially viable option for us to be able to deliver such training in partnerships. So, that might be a takeaway and maybe a further, deeper conversation, because I know that there are shortages within the municipal world. I get that. But the reality is, you've got lots of different types of jobs. So, the question is, where's the focus? And, you know, you'd have to have, again, the critical mass to be able to deliver that type of programming. But I think we've been pretty responsive to the community over, you know, 55-plus years of serving it. And if there is a need, students are there, and we can financially do it. Then I think we're always open to that conversation.
I can help initiate that conversation with Emo again. Yeah, thank you. Are there any other questions, comments? Seeing none, thank you very much for your presentation. And on a personal level, I want to thank Jamie for his contributions to the community. As you know, your TV, you can't turn it on without one of Jamie's programs, which is a great thing. They're always informative, and I'm teasing him. And he does color and play-by-play for the Lumber Kings. I sit on United Way with him, the advisory board, and he does a great job of representing us at the cabinet level and facilitating conversations and funding that comes into this community as well, as well as your many fundraising engagements across the city and in the county. So, thank you very much for that. It's not gone unnoticed, and we should often recognize people every time we get an opportunity. So, thank you.
Back at you, Warden. Emo, thank you very much. Have a good day, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity.
And we will also work our way towards sending a letter to the province, likely to Minister Dunlop, about resuming the Learn and Stay grant. So, we will dip our nose into that pool and send a note of some description. So, I just want to let council and the community know that. And now, Mr. Kelly, please.
Thank you, Warden. And it's indeed my pleasure to welcome Colonel Guinea and Chief Warrant Officer Cote to speak next. It's always a hard act to follow Mr. Brandberger, but I'm sure the Colonel would do a great job. Of course, we have a fantastic working relationship with the Garrison. And most recently, you heard this morning during a special meeting, some work that's going on on the Algonquin Trail through Garrison Petawawa. So, I'm very pleased to welcome the Colonel and Chief Warrant Officer to speak to us today. Thank you.
That one? Okay, good. Well, it is indeed a tough act to follow, especially when you come here without a PowerPoint presentation and your notes are on a small card. And, you know, just a bit of military history, it's often said that some of the greatest tactical battles, tactical victories that have been, one, have been planned off the back of a cigarette pack. I'm not a smoker, so this is about as close as you're going to get. So, good morning, Warden, councilors, directors, staff, mayors, and those joining us online. I'm Colonel Jason Guinea. I have with me Chief Warrant Officer Jimmy Cote. We're the, I say, the new command team for Garrison Petawawa. I came in in January, a little bit off-cycle, but Mr. Cote is joining us on the Garrison. He came in later this summer, where he just recently returned from a year-long deployment over to the Middle East. No stranger to the base, has been here for actually longer than I have, but we're extremely blessed to have him on our team. Just so everyone knows, there's actually two Colonels on the base. There's myself, and Jamie is the command team of the Garrison. And there's also Colonel Jay McKean, who's commander of Second Canadian Mechanized Brigade Group, who's actually down in Gagetown to observe some of his units that are getting ready to deploy overseas. But I consider Jimmy and myself lucky, because I think we have the best job, because we get to get out and do engagements like this in the community, and this is absolutely wonderful. And thank you very much for the invite. I think I'd just like to start off by saying congratulations to everyone in this room and everyone who's joining us online, because if you didn't know it, when you woke up this morning, you won the lottery. And what I mean by you won the lottery is, you probably got out of bed, you know, got up, did your morning routine, turned on your tap water, and were able to drink clean, potable water. You put on very nice clothes. You drove on a paved road, probably with your own car. Come to work, you were safe. You were free from the threat of violence, free from many fears, probably economically stable, and you're probably going to be able to go home to the same at the end of the day. And you're probably going to be able to repeat that same routine for many years, as you have for many years. And I just think it's appropriate to start off by, you know, sometimes I think we need to remind ourselves how lucky we are to be living in Canada, to be free from the violence, from the fear that is going on across the world, and I think recent conflict in Ukraine and just in the past couple of weeks, events that have been unfolding and are worsening in the Middle East, is a reminder to ourselves how lucky all of us are to be Canadians, either to be born here or to have moved here at some point in our lives. And it's a reminder that we have every day on the base as we see our young and old, our new and old soldiers deploying across the world to help promote Canadian values, and to, it's a very noble cause, and it's something that I am grateful for every day. So, I also look around, I look at the fantastic support that we, as military members, we as Garrison Petawawa, have from our community. And it's also a reminder, too, that I probably need to get all of yous out to the base at some point, because in talking with some people here today, never visited Garrison Petawawa, or it's been a few years since you've been there, and you've probably seen a lot of changes. So, that's just a mental note that I've got to say, is sometime in the next few months, we've got to have everyone out there and show you what's going on and maybe have a little bit of fun doing it. Now, Mayor Servis is lucky, because he comes out all the time. That's mostly because I'm trying to actively recruit him into the military. We'll break through one day. And I'll say, last week was a very busy week on the Garrison. We hosted a number of very senior VIPs from our Department of National Defense, including Minister Bill Blair, the new Minister of National Defense. It was his first visit to Petawawa in that capacity. And actually, as he got off the helicopter, one of the, the second person he met after me was actually Mayor Servis. And the reason why I brought Mayor Servis out there was to highlight the importance that the community is, the community is a part of the base. And actually, they had, I think they, you actually spoke to the minister longer than I did, and the minister said he wants to have a follow-up visit when you, next time he comes back. He didn't say he wanted to see me again, but he did mention Mayor Servis. So, and again, I thank you very much for having us here today. And I do apologize, I was unable to make previous invites due to my own operational tempo. But I think this just goes to show the strong bond we have with the base and the county. And I think probably one of the most meaningful demonstration of this close bond we share was really evident to me with the tragic events of 20 June, when we had the first-ever aircraft crash in Petawawa, which resulted in the deaths of two of our aviators. It was an absolutely overwhelmingly emotional time for the base and remains so. But the love and compassion and collaboration that happened was something that I've seen very rarely in my 28 years in the military with the community. And much gratitude to the Renfrew County Emergency Management Services, who were there on scene at the first, from the beginning and through us to the end, and all the community partners that helped us with not only the physical remediation of the crash site, but also the community support to those who were affected. So, thank you very much. As base commander, I have three priorities. I like to keep my number of priorities very simple, so I can count them on one hand. But they are in this order: people, relationships, and innovation. And the first one, I think, is pretty self-explanatory, because myself as a Colonel and Jimmy as a chief warrant officer, we would have no purpose to exist in our job capacity without soldiers. That's why we exist, is we are leaders. And people, and I'm not just talking about those who are on the base in uniform. We have about 5,500 soldiers, sailors, aviators, and special operators, and about 1,000 civilian members, who are equally an important part of the team. Just to sort of riff off of Jamie Brandberger's discussions about equity, diversity, and inclusion, we take this very seriously in the military. It's something that we have not done a great job at in the past. We have a defense advisory group network that's a choice, a chance for soldiers from underrepresented demographics in the Canadian Armed Forces to have a voice. And in fact, one of my bosses once said to me, "A good idea without resources is just a dream." So, for the first time ever, we have actually put money towards these efforts. And I allocated $100,000 to these groups to conduct activities, outreach, education, and awareness. It's been met with great success. We had our first-ever pride parade on the base, which, as you can imagine, in a very conservative military community, was a huge achievement. Mayor Servis was there, and I was able to join him for Petawawa's first-ever event. And this year, we're also going to see on the 8th of November, the first-ever Indigenous Remembrance Day ceremony on the base. And for those of you who may not be aware of, is there is a nationally-designated day, which is the 8th of November specifically to recognize our Indigenous veterans. And the people extends not, it's not only those who are serving in uniform and our defense teams, civilian colleagues, but equally important is their families. Because again, the family is the backbone of any soldiers. And so, my job as base commander extends into the community in that regard as well. My next priority is relationships, and I think this is just an example of the relationship and outreach work that we do on the base. But some of our key partners, apart from the municipalities and towns, are Canadian nuclear laboratories. I've visited there four times in my short nine months in command, and actually was just there last Friday with my command teams. Not only do we share a border with them and common interests, but there's a lot that we have learned with them, with their billion dollars of infrastructure ongoing, how they manage it, how they're building it. So, we've got a great partnership with them. Of course, Jamie spoke to our absolutely outstanding relationship we have with Algonquin College. And we've just started to try and form a tighter bond with our local Indigenous communities. And I met with Chief Sarzin for the first time a few weeks ago. And we did share our condolences to Chief, to the former Chief Jaco and her tragic family event. But what's important with the relationship part of my priorities is we can share not only just best practices, we can learn from each other, and we look at opportunities to grow and to collaborate. And I can say, the collaboration we have with Algonquin College, it's more than just, you know, some free courses and whatnot and some bespoke courses for our military veteran community, but also things that are practical. We're doing a massive recapitalization project in our training area, which is 300 square kilometers. And actually, the forestry program in Algonquin College is coming out to help us do some of the environmental assessments, some of the tree cutting. Sarah didn't mention it, but like, the reason why she was so animated yesterday, we had an hour-long discussion about, she's trying to get money for drones, and like, awesome, we love drones, and soldiers love drones, and you can come fly them on the base. And so, it's a lot of really good, practical symbiotic relationship. And finally, my other priority is innovation, and I kind of live by this quote, is "If you don't like change, you'll like irrelevance even less." And we are a changing society. We, I mean, my kids were practically born with an iPhone in their hand. Sometimes I think it's surgically attached, but, you know, this is the way of the future. The future is digital, the future is interconnected. And how can we start, how do we attract the best of Canadian society into the Canadian Armed Forces if we're still doing paper-based practices? How can we use online tools? How can we use technology to change how we do? An example is, we have an under-resourced fire department. We just can't get enough firefighters in there. So, the question is, do we need more, or do we need to do better? So, we're actually using drone technology to fight fires smarter, which is one example. And what I've often said, it's not kind of the graying population, which I am rapidly entering in my years of military service, but it's not us that necessarily has all the wisdom. Sometimes, we need to actually talk. If you want to talk about strategic communications and outreach, you've got to engage the 17-year-olds and the 23-year-olds and some of the innovative ideas that they have. When they're able to communicate that and see the leadership cares, it makes them invested in it. Next, I'd just like to talk a little bit about current operations, what's going on in the base. So, if, you may or may not be aware, but we have a significant military presence, specifically land presence in Europe. We currently have, from the base, around 750 Garrison Petawawa-based soldiers on the border of Russia and Latvia. Some of these soldiers are now in their third rotation there. We're going to see that group rotating just after Christmas, where we'll see another 750 over there. We also have a few hundred soldiers on what's referred to as Operation Unifier. That's the training mission to train Ukrainians in basic training. Mission that's very near and dear to my heart, that I started that mission in 2015, and it's now on its 17th rotation. And it's very important to note, I know this doesn't really get a lot of attention in the media, it's not just a training mission, like, this is a NATO deterrence mission. This is about actively defending Europe from further Russian aggression. It's about showing our commitment to our international alliances and standing up for our values. And, you know, while it may seem like a token contribution, because the numbers seem kind of small, like, how are you deterring Russia with 750 people? Well, that's not actually the case. Canada is leading the battle group there, a multinational battle group, which is approximately 1,200 soldiers. And in 2025, that commitment's going to grow to about 2,000 soldiers from all nations. And we'll see in the next rotational cycle, so in 2024, we'll get a couple of months' break, and then in 2025, we'll see about 1,000 soldiers from Petawawa per rotation going overseas. So, why that's significant is, well, not only does it lessen traffic getting on the base, if you've ever been to Petawawa at 7 o'clock or 4 o'clock, but this is a tempo not seen since the days of Afghanistan. You may or may not be aware that the Canadian Armed Forces, like other militaries across the world, and like many elements of the civilian sector, are facing significant recruiting and retention challenges. And so, what are we doing about it? Well, we're trying to make the soldier experience better. We did just receive a significant pay raise in line with the public servants. So, soldiers saw, you know, just a little over 12% pay raise, which is quite significant. And I can tell you, when I came in as base commander, we saw a remarkable, remarkable spike in the use of social services that we have on the base, so holiday gift baskets, gift cards for soldiers trying to make ends meet. But that's all trending in the right direction. The other thing, too, that we're trying as a Canadian Armed Forces, and this is not just a national initiative, but very much a local initiative, is we're trying to attract all Canadians from all sectors of society. We, just as an example, we have, you know, the Canadian population of females sits around 50%, I think slightly higher. Less than 20% of our military is female. And so, we, as a military, it's important in a democracy that we represent the society that we defend. So, we're making significant efforts to recruit from all walks of Canadian society. And in fact, I was very honored to be invited to the Jill of All Trades event at Algonquin College on Friday. And I told Jamie I was shamelessly coming in with recruiting brochures in hand, which he's happy about. He cares about getting them into the college, where they go after that. That's a great space for us. And I'd just like to maybe close with a couple challenges faced by our military families, which I think will be of interest to everyone here. And I think what I'm going to say is not much different than what other, what other, like, non-military Canadians are saying. So, first is access to affordable housing. Military families are unique in that there's frequent postings across the nation into a variety of housing markets. And I can say that, having moved nine times myself, having gained on some of those moves and having lost. And it can make it very difficult on a soldier, especially our more junior soldiers in lower-income brackets. And so, some of the things we're looking at are public-private partnerships. We have a lot of very empty land on the base, and we've asked the question is, is there an opportunity here to get into a public-private partnership to look at building some of those accommodations? And of course, we're working very closely, first and foremost, with the town of Petawawa to communicate our housing needs and looking at housing strategies together. But this is not unique solely to the base or to the town of Petawawa, but I would argue across the county. Next, again, is access to family medical care. Again, the unique requirements of military life have us posted. Again, the unique requirements of military life have us posting everywhere, so you get on a waitlist for a dentist, for a doctor, you move to a new town, and you're back at the bottom of the list. And we've had a lot of discussion within DND about cross-provincial accreditation for healthcare professionals. And I think this is one of those innovative leaps that we as Canadians can probably make. And so we're certainly seeking allyship in that regard. And the same thing for the third major issue is access to childcare. There's a shortage of this. We do have military daycares specifically for soldiers, but you know, that's not enough. And I know cross-provincial accreditation for early childhood educators would also be an enabler in that regard. But I don't think any of these issues are any different from anywhere else in Canadian society. So thank you very much for the opportunity to come here and engage with you, and I certainly will make the promises, is next time, I'll host. Maybe we won't have a council meeting, but we'll go and watch things that go boom and bang, and have some fun, and maybe put you off the rappel tower or something like that, something fun. Chief, did you have anything you wanted to?
I have the easiest job ever, is just to accommodate the commander and everything. The only job I have is to represent the troop or the DND member to wherever we're booked. I've been around for 15 years in the region. I'm living in Petawawa. I will never move out of there. Gary, you'll still have my taxes. That's okay. I love this place. Coming from a small community back in Quebec, I love the small community, but my job is easy. It's only to represent the DND, a member, which, people in uniform, civilian, and family. And if I can raise, bring something from them to you, it's a win-win.
Thanks, Chief. And thank you very much. And I'm happy to take any questions, comments, complaints.
So thank you very much, and very impressed with your card. I'm hoping to acquire some of that skill set. My cards end up being 12 pages long, and not quite as entertaining and interesting as yours. Thank you. Members of council, I see a member from Armbray.
Thank you, Warden. Colonel, is there an opportunity for dentists and doctors to get their trade through the military? And then once they're qualified to be on the base, and then take over some of the families when they're posted there as well?
So to answer your question in two parts, I'll answer the second part first, is medical care on the base is only for serving soldiers. It's not for families. That's different from, for example, the United States, you can go to a medical clinic, it's also on the base, it's also for families. So in fact, we don't even do medical care for veterans. So when a soldier's released, their files are handed by Veterans Affairs, and they're in the medical queue on the civilian side as everyone else. Is there dental and medical training for military? Like absolutely, there's, we have military dentists, military dental technicians, x-ray technicians, every medical trade you could, and dental trade that exists in the civilian world, almost, exists in the military world. And there's special recruiting bonuses for them, but only if you're coming in as a uniformed member. And so one of the things we have to be very careful about balancing is, yeah, we need a lot more medical care. I think dental care, I think we're relatively okay in that sector. We just have to be kind of careful in hiring too much on the base, because then that also takes away from not only the community, but also from our families. But if you know anyone who wants to sign up as a military doctor, dentist, like, well, you already got my card, and we'll, we'd be happy to bring him on board. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? The member from Amistim Bromley, and then from Petawawa.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you very much. Colonel Guinea, I was very pleased to meet you on your welcome to the community at the changeover of command. Just, and I had not intended, but just following up on my colleague's question, in terms of recruitment and retention, I'm very careful of inserting myself into policies of the Canadian military, but it does seem that it might be overcoming a pretty significant challenge, not so much perhaps with those retired from the military, but that the on-base medicine is only accessible to the serving member. Seems like for a recruitment and retention challenge, it's got to be a pretty substantial hurdle when families are moved about across the country, as you had indicated, to find once again the doctor, et cetera, not just for perhaps spouse, but also children, et cetera. That it seems like it's a pretty big challenge from a relocation standpoint that must confront the military on a regular basis.
Yeah, certainly. And I, I mean, as a Colonel, I am no different. I was posted to the area four years ago. I live in Armbray. My family still doesn't have a family doctor. And one of the things we're looking at in the military is kind of breaking, you know, again, like we're a supertanker, we're not a speedboat. So we move very slow and deliberately, and we move a bit too fast, then we get jammed in the canal, so to speak. So one of the policies we're looking at, it's not so much policy-related, it's more kind of like leadership and career management related, is how often do we move and why do we need to move? Because the new economic realities are, you know, you need a dual income to live in some of the places that we live in. What's the economic impact with inflation, cost of housing going up, and then medical care? Then we also get into, like, you know, the family, a lot of the policies were developed around the family of 1960, single income, you know, spouse did not work, and you just picked up and moved. Well, that's no longer the case. And we're seeing, actually, our own demographics in the military, the average age of a soldier getting in now, it's kind of mid-20s, not like 17, 18. So some people are coming in with already having those families. So those are things we're exploring. And now with technology, remote work, you know, can you be posted to a headquarters in Ottawa and still be working in Petawawa? So those are some things that we're looking at to alleviate some of those stresses.
Thank you. And the member from Petawawa, please.
Thank you, Chair, through you. And thank you, Colonel Guinea and Chief Warnerf Cote for coming today. And thank you for everything you do on a daily basis. And be sure to thank all of your members on the garrison for everything they do on a daily basis, on our behalf, both here at home and internationally. We really appreciate all that you do. You spoke of collaborations and partnerships, and I'm pretty sure there's a member of the military from Garrison Petawawa that lives in every one of our 17 municipalities. And we take our role seriously about, you know, providing your members with a good place to live, work, and play. But if there are ever any concerns or needs or wants that you think we could do better to help your members exist in our community, be sure to bring those forward, and we'll do as best we can to accommodate those.
Absolutely, thanks. And thank you for everyone for your support.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands, I'd like to add to that, thank you very much for the cooperation of your serving members and your civilian staff with the Ontario Winter Games. That's only been six months ago. It seems like about two years ago now, the speed we've been working, but we wouldn't have been able to pull that off in our community without your volunteers, but also your facilities. The facilities were first-rate, we had access to them over the two weekends, and had compliments from all of our participants and judges and spectators. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge the work that you did and your staff to allow us the access, and then also to make sure that it was a super experience for everybody.
Thanks very much. And I would also like to publicly acknowledge that that was my first community outreach as base commander, and publicly acknowledge that I have been warmer on some of our Arctic exercises than it was, because I remember the opening days, the opening night, so it was an honour to host.
All right, seeing no further questions, thank you very much, gentlemen, and always a pleasure. Thank you. And I'd like to welcome our partners in crime and virtually everything else, Mayor Jervis and councillor Purcell. They're going to do a presentation. We're going to do something a little different today. They'll make their presentation, and then we'll hold the questions, because we will have Laurie Lapine present behind them with some information about the programs that exist, and then we'll open up for questions. We'll have them sit in Boncher Valley's seat with an extra chair when they're done, and then you have access to a mic. So thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, and good morning, everyone, Warden Emo, members of county council. I really do appreciate that you've allowed us to come and speak with you today about a very serious issue. Having followed up from the previous two delegations, I would say that it would be nice if we were here today on a friendly, lighthearted topic, but we're not. It would be nice if it was a good news story, such as listening to the college or what's going on at the garrison, to major employers in our community that do so much for us. And I know that all of you recognise that, but we're not here with one of those stories either, but it could be. So what we're here today to talk to you about is, and my understanding is that the motion that was passed unanimously by the city of Pembroke has been circulated to you, what we're here to talk to you today about homelessness. So homelessness isn't just affecting the city of Pembroke, it's affecting the entire county. It's just that it would appear that homelessness is more visible in communities that are the hub areas, the areas that there are some services available, and individuals congregate there. So I have my pleasure of being joined by councillor Purcell today, as well as Mr. Steve Boland, who is with the Pembroke area community task force. So different individuals coming together to try and address a very serious issue. So with that, if I could turn it over to councillor Purcell.
Thank you. Thank you, Warden Emo, councillors, for accepting your invitation, or accepting our request for appearance to appear before this council. You know, I'm kind of just going to take off from the Colonel, and you know, not everybody hits the lottery. And unfortunately, you know, our most vulnerable population don't hit the lottery, for various different reasons, life circumstances. They don't have the option in terms of having housing. The weather's turning cold. Typically, we have a warming station set up for November the 1st until the end of April. This year, some of the funding that was provided previously to the Grind no longer exists. This is the reason why I put forward a motion at Pembroke City Council to declare a homelessness emergency for our most vulnerable populations. We're at a crisis situation. Steve Boland is part of the pact as well, as many individuals that are concerned citizens have graciously, you know, put together a strategy in regards to how we could support those most vulnerable populations this winter. We're looking for funding from the county, and the reason why we're looking for that funding is so that we could establish a warming centre out of the Zion Lutheran Church. The Zion Lutheran Church council has to meet on November the 5th, and that's where we're at right now, in regards to allowing use of that property. And the reason for that is that the Grind does no longer have the space to perform that function. And this is, again, is a temporary opportunity to provide that shelter for homeless individuals. As you're well aware, the homelessness is not just in our area, it's not just in Pembroke. Pembroke is a hub and for services. We have Pembroke Regional Hospital, we have addiction treatment services, mental health supports, methadone supports in terms of addiction. We have, you know, various, we have the Grind that provides a day program where they're provided clothing, and as well as a warm meal in some cases. And they work in partnership with the food banks. The city of Pembroke already provides approximately about $3.9 million in terms of transfer payment in regards to social services. And this issue is not just a regional program, but must be addressed with, you know, assistance from the county. We can't do it alone. Mayor Bennett, I don't know if you've been following Laurentian Valley, Mayor Bennett stepped up to the plate, and at their council meeting, provided funding of $20,000 to support this homeless initiative. We see the homeless, approximately about 44 that we currently are aware of. We know that number is greater, and we know that that number is increasing just based on life circumstances. And typically, they're located mostly in Pembroke area, because again, they're close to those services. So along the Algonquin Trail, at the end of Elgin Street in Laurentian Valley, you know, up in the west end of Pembroke as well. And not to say that there's not many other individuals that are sleeping downtown, you know, in corridors and those kinds of things. So I don't think it's a surprise to anybody that we have this homelessness problem, and especially the most vulnerable individuals within our community. And you know, as councillors, not only for the city, but also for the county, we have a duty to protect our citizens, our residents, ensuring their safety and security. And I think this is what the ask is. And I think what we need to do is really look at opportunities that we can partner, and really come forward to put something together quickly so that we can be successful. The total ask is about $225,000. And you're going to say, wow, that's a big ask, Troy. It is a big ask. And the reason for that is, is that the numbers that we're using are from the Grind's numbers that was provided from Deacon Adrian, and these were the true costs in terms of the program that occurred out of the Grind last year. Some of that funding came from community services, and I know that that funding through Ms. Lapine is no longer available, because it was due to some COVID funding. So that's a majority of the funding that was providing those supports. They did have an out-of-the-cold program, or a walk, and some fundraising activities. But again, those fundraising monies also go towards, in terms of day-to-day operations, so there's not enough dollars to support day-to-day operations and the nighttime operations. So this leaves us with a, you know, considerable issue to deal with. As you're well aware, it's getting cold outside, right? I certainly wouldn't want to be sleeping outside on the weekend, the damp, cold weather, you know, and I think we need to really kind of look to see how we can make those monies available to support this initiative for this year, and also look at, you know, putting it into our budgets for next year. This issue isn't going away, and I think it's an opportunity for us to really step up to the plate and demonstrate, you know, a sense of community and making sure that we look out for the most vulnerable populations. I think I've kind of hit all the notes that I have. I think that I'm here just to request consideration for funding. You're probably going to say, how much? Like I said, the $225,000, minus the $20,000 from LV, so we have a shortfall of about $200,000. And that's the sum of the dollars that I've been looking for in terms of support today. So I appreciate, again, the opportunity to talk about this. I know it's difficult, and I know that there's not one municipality here that hasn't been impacted by homelessness based on people's individual life circumstances. And, you know, I think here's our opportunity to really step up the plate. One further comment is, is that, you know, we had eight municipalities participate in the community wellbeing and safety plan. What were the top three issues? Homelessness, mental health, and addiction. This vulnerable population that we're talking about are impacted by all three. We spent dollars in terms of supporting a consultant to provide recommendations, and I think that this would be one of those recommendations to move forward with that plan. Anyway, thank you very much, I appreciate the opportunity, and have a wonderful day.
Great, thank you. And if you just want to head back to the back, we've got two chairs and a mic, and once we get the other two presentations out of the way, then we'll go with a round of questions. Thank you. And I'll call on Ms. Lapine.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to council, thank you as well to Mayor Jervis and as well to councillor Purcell. This presentation and what you presented certainly rings clear for us as well in terms of what we're finding through the community services department. Homelessness is an issue that we are dealing with on a daily basis all throughout the year. And certainly, the warming centre is addressing the needs over the winter, because the county of Renfrew does not have a shelter for homeless individuals. Throughout the last three years, we have participated in what's called a point-in-time count, which is a mandate from the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, where we take a snapshot of where things are at when it comes to homelessness in our take a snapshot of where things are at when it comes to homelessness in our community. And I will tell you that we are in the process of launching this year's annual point in time count. It's launching this week and will be running until next week. And what we're doing is partnering with many agencies throughout the county that intersect with people who find themselves precariously housed or homeless to really dig deep into information about what what is going on and what is the issue that is or issues that are at hand. Very pleased to have our paramedic services participating as well because they see front and center what is going on when it comes to homelessness. When it comes to the homelessness funding, we receive funding through the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. That is the only funding that we receive through any source for homelessness supports. And it's through what's known as the Homelessness Prevention Program. And this council may recall that back earlier this year, we had an announcement that came through that increased our annual amount that was issued to the County of Renfrew. We historically received it through what was called the CHIPPI funding. So folks that may have been around in previous years may recall it was the Consolidated Homelessness Initiative Program. That particular funding is divvied up through our investment plan, and we have several different programs that we have been supporting over the last many years in terms of homelessness supports and in terms of housing stability. So it's a kind of large coverage area. We're trying to prevent homelessness, and then we have to address homelessness when it appears. And, you know, our our most predominant use of the homelessness prevention program outside of the capital investment that was announced back earlier this year, which is supporting the build at Lee and Douglas, is through our emergency assistance program, which is a very significant program. I can tell you that we're actually overspending right now in that particular program. And that's the one where we provide emergency temporary hotel motel stays. We assist with rent arrears for somebody who is behind in their rent. We want to keep them housed because that's prevention's incredibly important. We help with utility arrears and any extraordinary housing-related expenses. But we also have rent assistance programs which help people who cannot afford to remain in their homes with a rental top up. And we've had rent geared income in the private market, which we've talked about in the past, where we assist folks off our housing list, our Rent for County Housing application waitlist. And we have Emergency Minor Home Repair Program, which is a program that is helping low-income homeowners in terms of keeping their house, could be furnace, roof, very critical repairs. As mentioned earlier in the presentation, we were very fortunate during COVID to receive social services relief funding. And this council will recall that over the period of the COVID from 2020 through to the funding ended at the end of last year, we received in the amount of close to $6 million, which flowed out to community agencies. And we were able to isolate some money last year to assist the Grind in operating their warming center. We know that many of our staff had clients that we are working with that are part of our point in time count, but also part of our Built for Zero Canada program, which we're a partner in. And that's where we're really tracking intensely people that are experiencing homelessness for six months or more and providing additional supports for those folks. But we know that many of those folks were accessing the warming center last year. So in terms of the programs that we're currently offering, we do have, you know, some programs that are in existence that assist folks, but clearly based on the need and the fact that we're we're heading into being oversubscribed in our emergency assistance program, we are also in a funding crunch. And I can tell you that the way it works with our homelessness prevention program is that our funding is based on a different year than our calendar year here. Our funding goes to the end of March of 2024. And the investment plan that gets approved through council and then submitted to the ministry for their approval was done earlier this year. So we can certainly have further discussion about, you know, where where funding exists or where opportunities exist. But I I wanted to make sure that this council knew that, you know, we do have programs that we are certainly operating, but we also recognize that there is a need and we recognize that the warming center that was delivered here in the City of Pembroke, the first one that we're aware of that that has taken place in the County of Renfrew, but took place in the City of Pembroke through the Grind, was highly used and used by many of our clients as well. Through you, Warden, that I can add more if you wish, but I can hold it there for now.
I think we'll probably get more from you when we get to the round of questions. And with that, I'll move over to Deputy Chief Grenier, please.
Thank you, Warden. I just want to give a little glance from the paramedic services. This situation has impacted us from a call volume perspective. Every day, we've met and we encounter people with homelessness, addiction, or substance use. Over the last year, we have 30 deaths related to that, about 30 overall last month and five deaths last week. So that's as an impact on all our community. Just from a perspective of workload and then just how we capture, we disbursed about 340 Narcan kit. And the Narcan kit is just not a distribution as we try to do some pain education, some prevention, some safety scan to make sure that, you know, the the community are well located. We're working closely with the team to make sure that we're well equipped from a housing Distribution is quite complex in nature, and I think we all need to work together to to move this ball forward. And I know from multiple other paramedic services are using a model that we're proposing that, you know, working with social worker, being on the ground, building a relationship, understanding what's needed to communicate so we can actually invest in, you know, what we can do to prevent the homelessness from happening in the first place. This is what I have in terms of a little report from the paramedic services.
Thank you. So with that, as I said, council, it's a slightly different approach we're taking. It's more of a conversation today and trying to work out a path forward, recognizing the urgency of this. And at the same time, also wanting to ensure that you had information as as much as we could give you about about our responses that are existing and the and the one that we're developing with the mobile hub through the paramedic services. So with that, questions, comments? The member from Amos and Brownlee, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And thank you to Mayor Jervis and Councilor Purcell. For those that are not on Health Committee, perhaps you may be aware, when we initiated, when the paramedics, Chief Nolan initiated the discussion about the proposed mobile outreach that would be in collaboration, certainly with Ms. Lapine's department as well, that was broached at the September Health Committee meeting. And at that point, Councilor Purcell had, you know, inquired as to what's the route to come forward to the county. And so that was kind of the the genesis of this, though, of course, the issue predates that. In fact, the issue is it's a Hydra now. And I think that there is, even in the three areas that the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan had noticed notified as the the three highest priorities, if you will, I think that there is substantial intersectionality amongst all three of those that are contributing to this. In addition to that, perhaps council had the opportunity to to watch the local CTV news on Friday evening wherein there was a report, certainly, Warden, you were party to that, as was Dr. Morganstern, as was Chief Nolan and some paramedics as well, that we are confronted now with a substantial pressurized situation that is outside of our experience. In the month of September alone, there were 30 overdoses within the City of Pembroke itself and unfortunately and tragically, five deaths from overdose. So I'm not sure that our community is aware of this. I think oftentimes, this is obscured at best and invisible to the larger community. And it is a Hydra. So even what's being proposed is not a cure. It is a harm reduction, and I think harm reduction is vital. And in this instance, in particular, in addition to the the scourge of addictions and homelessness, the, as noted even by Colonel Guinea, as the thermometer plummets, now we are dealing with a whole different level of health concerns and issues for the homeless community. So I want to thank certainly the the delegation from Pembroke. And I think we need to find with some alacrity the path forward to ensure, you know, the most those leading the most precarious lives, the most vulnerable among us are addressed and are not left behind in our community, and their needs are met. So we do need to find a solution and with some haste. Thank you.
Thank you. The councillor, a member from Petawawa, please.
Thank you, Chair, through you. And thanks, Mayor Jervis and Councilor Purcell, and everybody else that contributed to this conversation. It's a very important issue and one that's not just a Pembroke issue. I know that there's probably vulnerable people from all of our municipalities that leave our municipalities and go to Pembroke because that's where the services are. So this is an issue that's important to all of us and one that needs a solution. But often, issues like this are hard to find long-term solutions to anyways. But I think what we have here is a short-term solution to help our vulnerable members get through the winter. And the question I have is the $225,000, is this, is some of this funding going towards creating this space or is this an amount of money that will be needed on an annual basis to help this section of our population get through the winters?
Certainly. Thank you for your question, Mayor Service. Majority of the costs really have to address the security aspect because we would need, and I Protech Five has been engaged, and I did a security assessment in regards to the Zion Lutheran Church and how we can maintain security there. So the total cost is probably about $150,000 for the security company aspect to have those individuals available to to provide security. The other costs are for coordinator position, about $20,000, food costs, insurance costs, furniture costs. One of the things is we don't have a suitable, I guess, furniture for individuals to use because there's nowhere in the City of Pembroke where we can operate a shelter. You can't sleep overnight. Okay? It's there's no zoning that allows that to happen. So what we've done is went out to the brick and looked at recliner chairs. And those recliner chairs are, they're not leather, they're they're just, they're they're more of a pleather type of recliner that costs less than $500 apiece. We managed to purchase or we are able to purchase 30 of those recliners at a cost of $15,000. So that'd be a one-time cost. And the reason for that is, is we we want to make it as comfortable as possible for these individuals. So so let me put it in perspective. You're dealing with a addiction, mental health, and now you're sleep deprived? It just compounds the issues. It doesn't allow you to move forward in terms of your rehabilitation, right? I don't know how many of you guys can go on one or two hours of sleep, looking from warm places to to stay and moving around just to stay warm and then expect, you know, to be successful in terms of changing those behaviors. It just doesn't occur. So this gives them an opportunity to rest, not sleep, rest. And it's done in an appropriate manner. The other additional cost is $5,000 for security cameras. So a lot of the dollars are initial setup and the security component of it. Now, that's for this year. Again, if we have more time to look at that, we can look at various different prevention measures to maybe lower the cost in terms of security. But that's currently what we have in place right now. So there's no cost, as far as I'm concerned, in terms of the the utilization of the Zion Lutheran Church below the, there's a nice entrance that comes down, there's washrooms that are available. You know, we're putting a call out for individuals to participate and volunteer as well. As you well, there's a lot of cleanup activities that have to take place prior and after, making sure that, you know, we're following those guidelines. I did have the opportunity, and I think this is a good opportunity just to kind of talk a little bit of my experience, I did have the opportunity to go down to Belleville and and take a tour of Grace, Grace Inn. Grace Inn started as a warming center. Now it's evolved to 500 homeless individuals, right? 23-bed capacity with a transition home as well. I don't want to get there. That's not where I want to be. I want to be able to provide, or at least my vision is to be able to provide, you know, safe, secure space for individuals and work with community services to see how we can, you know, move these individuals, promoting their rehabilitation. So so a majority of the costs are, so it it comes to about $235,000 in terms of all those costs. And again, we received $20,000 in terms of donation from LV based on their last council meeting. So so this is why we're looking at the shortfall. And a lot of the other expenses will actually be borne by PACT. And they have some various generous individuals that are also willing, and I'd expect that we'd also look at some fundraising for future years as well. Maybe somebody wants to sponsor a chair, you know, buy a leather chair or a leather pleather chair for for that one. So, you know, $500, you know, contribution would buy a chair. So there's various different opportunities, it's just that the time is now, we need to act now, and then put together a longer-term solution, getting into our our financial budgets so that we can be, we can provide these services ongoing in partnership with other organizations. And my goal is eventually, what we'd like to see is, you know, other organizations take this on. But we're just, we're at a crisis right now with the cold weather setting in and not having that opportunity to have a warm shelter for individuals. So thank you.
Thank you. And supplementary, Petawawa.
Thank you, Chair. Will there be any mental health or addiction supports at that location during the warming?
Good question. So the Grind will still provide their day program. So the Grind has drop-in services and wraparound services that are available during the day. So this location would be strictly available from 10:00 AM till 8:00 AM in the morning, sorry, 10:00 PM till 8:00 AM in the morning. So strictly there for, you know, providing shelter and warmth and an opportunity to rest. Those services are made available through the Grind through their day program. And, you know, we're not doing this, you know, we're not doing this in silos. We've had probably about three stakeholder meetings with various different participations, even Jamie Brandberger from the college. You know, we're talking about, you know, looking at, you know, expanding, you know, some of those opportunities, such as staffing, you know, to partner with the college down the road so that way, you know, they could provide, you know, nursing students, social services, students to help support the operations going forward as well. So there's lots of, you know, and there's lots of community behind this initiative. Fred Blackstein, I had the opportunity to speak to him last night at the PACT meeting, you know, very influential in terms of, you know, his accomplishments. And, you know, he is one of those individuals that that is a member of PACT as well. Thank you.
I can as well, just to add, in terms of speaking to what your question is, Mayor Service, I know that the the County of Renfrew does a great job in terms of like with the Grind, and we've had a number of different presentations to Pembroke City Council in terms of the recognition that there are services available and the county coming into the Grind, working with different individuals, meeting them on their terms, if you will, to to chat with these different individuals. What are the shortfalls? Is it that you don't have a health card, you don't have a birth certificate, you don't have whatever it takes so that we can get you to access certain services? And I know that we've received great presentations from the from the county to the City of Pembroke to inform us and educate us as to how that how that functions and how that piece works, to recognize that there is, there is things in motion, there is different parts to it. It's trying to pull pull this last piece or this other piece together in terms of the warming shelter, because otherwise you're going to have more, I'm not trying to be alarmist, but you're going to have other deaths is what you're going to have. These individuals, I don't, I don't claim to understand, and I hope that I'm never in that position, but they're, they're, they, some of them will perish. And so luckily, last year, with, again, cooperation, that there was the the space at the Grind, it's not available. And so kudos to to Councilor Purcell and and other individuals. A lot of people I find in the community, they might approach A lot of people I find in the community, they might approach one-on-one and tell us what it is that they're willing to do or what they do do and so forth. But some people don't want to be flashy and say, I gave X number of dollars to whatever, they don't want to, they just want to be part of the solution but not actually be there. But, but yes, you know, well said by Councillor Purcell in terms of the Grind and other services in connection with the county. It's, it all comes back to partnerships.
Thank you. And Member from North Agona, please.
Thank you, Warden, and yeah, through you, great presentations. And I certainly do recognize that it is a, it's a very complicated and it is a serious issue without a simple solution, and I know this is short-term. It's also a challenge because we have our county paramedics who, you know, their time gets stretched because of the increase in calls. Our Renfrew County housing units, you know, again, this, this gets compounded because mental health and addictions and food security are all part of the, it's a much bigger problem. And as a result of that, I mean, the county has 31 vacant units right now that are waiting renovations in our Renfrew County housing. So it's difficult when it comes to where are the money priorities and how do we overcome this whole series of problems? And it has to be, it has to involve a lot more, I think, support and input from the province as well because we don't have enough mental health services available that really get to the root cause of some of the challenges that these people are facing. And until we can address those, some of the other issues that we're facing as far as cost increases for housing, cost increases for paramedic services and, and, and social services and, and housing, it's, I agree, this is a short-term solution to try and get through the winter, but we certainly have a much bigger problem going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Gervais, and then I'll turn to a member from Amis and Bromley.
If I may, if I can just simply say that the, the motion was sent to, to the, not only Member of Provincial Parliament, our Member of Provincial Parliament, but as well as to the Premier's office. But if, not that it doesn't assist in terms of this year, in terms of the ask right now, but as well in terms of moving forward, one of the items would be, if County Council was, was of such a mind, is to, I'm not so, I'm learning over, over a short period of time, that not too sure about the concept of delegations and how much attention we, we get whenever, as mayors that we, and delegates that we go to, to try and squeeze some time with appropriate ministers. But it's trying to secure time away from the, the different ministers on their own turf at Queen's Park. And so if it was a takeaway or an action item, if County Council was to say, yes, the warden or whoever it is, we can team up and do one of these, you know, have a conversation with our Member of Provincial Parliament and try and secure some time with the appropriate ministries and the premier and just to have a conversation that we're not limited to 10 minutes and someone knocking on the door saying, okay, Mayor Service wants to talk now, so get out. That's what it feels like sometimes. But, you know, that might be a takeaway in terms of trying to tap the province on, on the shoulder to say, you know, recognize that there's a, there's a large issue here. But we, that's, we did send that motion to those levels as well, just to highlight that potentially we're coming to talk to you as well.
Thank you. And Amis and Bromley, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Yes, I too have often found it perhaps the ancient court procedure wherein we are invited to court for 15 minutes and no more, and then thou shall leave our presence in haste. In any event, Mr. Warden, I was just kind of inquiring, so if I'm understanding, through the Grind and through funding that was available through Chippy or the Canadian Homelessness Prevention Initiative, sorry, I do have that wrong, I'm seeing a slight shake of the head. In any event, whatever the funding was, so there was a warming center in place and that no longer is available to continue. I'm just wondering, so predicated on Councillor Purcell's estimate of costing, I just wonder if Ms. Lapine could provide some background on what had been our experience and the cost of providing a sheltering service in the past when it was stood up at the Grind?
Please.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to council. Last year, the Grind approached us for what they called the Out of the Cold Program. And at that time, we had social services relief funding, which was the COVID funding that came through the province. And certainly, the COVID funding was definitely targeting people who were at risk of homelessness. So it was a good fit. The cost last year to operate their facility, I believe, was, they opened it around December to the end of March, was a little over $80,000. My understanding, we did fund that through the Social Services Relief Fund over to the Grind, and that was to offset the security costs. I will add as well, because I am aware that throughout the period of COVID and the Social Services Relief Fund, we were able to also assist the Grind and a partnership that they have with St. Vincent de Paul to kind of provide hot meals. When the Salvation Army had closed, they used to be our hot meal provider in the city, the Grind and St. Vincent's took that over. And I know that some of the funding that came through the Social Services Relief Fund for the food security was also utilized during that time. So those are the costs at that time last year. Thank you.
Supplementary.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you through you to Ms. Lapine and for correcting my ignorance. I'm, I'm, of course, we are confronted with the, the situation right now as we are only a week away from the 1st of November. And it is incumbent upon us to find a, a solution, as I say, with some alacrity. However, that this was recognized, or we chose to recognize it through the discretionary spending of the Social Services Relief Funding, is saying that this is something that we should be advocating with through the province, through the federal government. It is a social service. We are reminded consistently and constantly of the reorganization within Ontario and that social services were re-uploaded back to the, the province. It is incumbent upon us to have partnerships with senior levels of government moving forward. We're not going to have that timeline depress that for the winter of 2023, 24, and we need to have a solution. But I think the ongoing discussion must engage the senior levels of government as well because that did certainly provide the means through which we've engaged in this very necessary facility in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. And what I'd like to suggest is, I had made some notes over the last couple of weeks, have watched Pembroke City Council, I went back through their YouTube last night, and my impression is that you could commit funding in the neighborhood of about $100,000. Is that a, not to put you on the spot, but is that a comfort level that the city has so that we can start talking about, about budget? And while you work your answer, my suggestion is that we take a bit of a multi-pronged approach. I'd like to see us set up an ad hoc committee of the city-county with a County of Renfrew rep, a City of Pembroke, an LV rep, the Grind because of the service side of it, and the faith-based community, or PACT as well because they're going to be providing some, some information. I'd like to see us, I approached United Way yesterday when I was in Ottawa, and they have an interest in, in frankly, our two organizations showing a leadership role with this, as we've all agreed we should be, and they would assist with facilitation and possibly there may be some funding available, no promises, but they would take a, take a look at it. Also, the idea was that we would pursue, as Mayor Gervais correctly noted, we should seek a delegation as quickly as possible through our MPP and as, as the member from Amis and Bromley noted, with the federal government as well. And with that, I'd also like to suggest we, while we're putting this together, we take a very serious look at making sure the point-in-time data, but all data about the users throughout the year because I think research and data drive, drive funding dollars from the other, from the other sectors. So those are the kinds of things that I, you know, I think that we can do as, as we move this forward. And if we could get a more, and I know it's difficult, a more detailed budget, the numbers that you talked about, if you could flow those to us right away and then we can, and then we can start forming our response because we'll utilize community services and we've already got the community paramedics out, but we're going to formalize that with the, with the proposal, the mobile hub because we think that we have to get out into our other communities as well. And this is probably the way that we can do it. So very quickly, those are the ideas that I could advance to you and Councillor Purcell, please.
Thank you, Warden. I guess the first thing is, is that we've already met with those various individuals that are, you know, stakeholders within this homelessness initiative. And we've had our, this is, I think our third meeting is on Monday. So we're moving that forward and these have the appropriate representatives. In fact, the CAO has been at some of those, those meetings. Ms. Lapine and representatives from community services are all those meetings. We have representation from the Grind, the city of Pembroke, Laurentian Valley, PACT. You know, there's other individuals, like, it goes on and on. But I think right now is, the thing is, is it's time for action and we really kind of have to have a solution, you know, as soon as possible. And we were tasked to kind of go away and look at how we can all contribute. So I just wanted to talk about the funding in terms of Pembroke's funding. We currently provide the Grind, you know, leased space for a dollar per month, right? That's been ongoing. That's an investment from, from the city of Pembroke. And also the $3.9 million in terms of the transfer payments that we actually provide for those types of services as well. That's an annual revenue. I'm not saying that, you know, Pembroke may not contribute, may, will not contribute additionally. That's my hope. I think, you know, we're all in this together, we got to have, you know, we all have to be in the game. But, you know, again, it'll be a vote at council. But I think my, my request today is to, let's see how we can move forward in a, in a expedient matter and, in a manner, and, you know, with this thing forward faster and sooner. So I hope that helps. You know, when you're kind of going back between, and I'm sure you're all in this position, right? You're trying to negotiate, you're trying to get things going, you're trying to get people to show their hands so that way, you know, people feel good about, you know, their contribution. And it's very difficult. And, and I can't speak on behalf of the city of Pembroke because, again, we have to bring it back to council. My ask on Tuesday night was $100,000. It was denied at that time because they want a clarification and also in terms of the county in regards to the $3.9 million and also, you know, the donations that you've been giving the Grind based on the rent relief and, and, you know, potential purchase that we're building in terms of the old fire hall.
Thank you. So the idea of the advisory or ad hoc committee is we need to have, if we put money into something, we need to have the management of it. And so that's, and I'm assuming Laurentian Valley not putting words into their mouths but when, with some second thought would agree with that, and I'm sure you would as well. And the idea is that then somebody has custody of the money, somebody has custody of a budget, somebody then also drives the, the need for service delivery and sets some standards and reviews them because when you put something together, it has to be tweaked. And rather than bringing you back to two councils and three councils and waiting a month for a decision, it just doesn't make any sense. So with that, that's what I would suggest we, you know, we will do is move forward with, with a plan as loosely sketched out as it is to try and, and find some funding and then present that back. And then it's a matter of who in the community can match it going forward. And committing to a, you know, a joint letter from myself and Mayor Gervais to the minister and the federal minister as well about ongoing funding or emergency funding and ongoing funding. If that's, and I, a member from Deep River, sorry?
Wasn't, sorry, I wasn't trying to, trying to jump in when you're there, but where to start? It's interesting that when we see trends, they tend to move from west to east. And whether it's popular music that starts in California and moves to the east five years later, or housing crisis, housing issues, the opioid crisis, mental health and addiction problems. And the reason I say that is, is that not that we didn't have an opioid crisis in Renfrew County five years ago, but in 2012, there was, in, in, just in B.C., there was 250 deaths from opioid overdoses. That's in 2012. In 2023, there's almost 2,500. That's five people a day, just in B.C. and primarily in Vancouver. And like, like I said, I'm not trying to, to say that outside of, it didn't happen here, but I was, I knew it was coming because you just see those things happening. And the reason I bring that up with specifically with this issue is the fact that, and recognizing emergency funding for homelessness is important, but there's a lot of factors involved with homelessness. And Lord Nemo will attest to the, the significant work that AMO is doing on this for Ontario and all the other provincial associations and also FCM. You look at the final day of the AMO conference this year was entirely, every single event was homelessness. So it's, it's not unique to here. The thing, one, I remember talking to the mayor of Collingwood just in the last couple sets of meetings that I was at. And what's everybody's opinions of Collingwood? It's a nice place, probably fairly affluent. They have over, over 100 homeless people in Collingwood. And it, that was kind of a shock to me that, you know, but, so it's not unique to, to any community across this country. But on the, just with respect to, you know, an ad hoc committee or something like that, I think that would be good to have a look at that because it's not just homelessness. We can build houses if we could find a contractor, I guess, and the money. But it's, it's all the other factors that are included in some of the, some of the reasons for homelessness, sorry. So, and that ad hoc committee can also look for funding as, as the warden has mentioned. And there are, there are programs available. I know that just recently, there was a program started in, it was just announced by FCM in June, and it's a, I think it was around a $10 million project that builds 175 more affordable houses. But more importantly than that, it has all those wraparound services that goes with it, which makes, which makes these types of projects sustainable in the long run. So I would just, I'd just point that out, that there, there are funding streams and an ad hoc committee could probably have a look at that. I know all of this doesn't specifically deal with emergency funding that we may need in Renfrew County before the wintertime, but I just thought I'd throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. And the member from Amis and Bromley, please.
Thank you. Very briefly, Mr. Warden, I just wanted to actually to acknowledge and commend Laurentian Valley and repeat that this does need to be moved on with a sense of urgency, with a focus. But I think it's important to note that I certainly acknowledge the partnership that the county has with the city of Pembroke in numerous files, on numerous committees that we push forward, our shared community here. But the, the transfer payment that Councillor Purcell is discussing, likewise, Laurentian Valley through the levy is also providing money through the county. And in addition to that levy that is provided, 10% actually, based on weighted assessment, Laurentian Valley provides 10% of the levy for the county. So they are contributing and they are recognizing the extra levy requirements. And I think that's important and not to get bogged down, but I think- And I think that's important, and not to get bogged down, but I think it is, it is safe to say that it is at a critical stage of the City of Pembroke, but I anticipate the growth, unfortunately, in this tragic scourge, we may likewise be engaging in multiple communities, and that's why I think that there is likely going to have to be some participation, both from the larger and the local.
Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Warden. I'm just trying to find a path forward that's going to work in a timely fashion. As I understand it, you're suggesting appointing a member of, well, let me back up a little bit. So, yes, Ms. Lapine, Ms. Dubrasky, myself have sat at least in one meeting, I think, if not two. I know I've been at one, and thank you very much for the invite. Formally, we have not appointed a singular elected member to that, I'll say informal committee at this point. So, I would suspect that's probably something you'd want to consider. And as well, $225,000 is not insignificant, and I know it's something that we have not budgeted for whatsoever. As the HPP, as Ms. Lapine has pointed out, has all been committed to more than once, to several other projects at the moment. So, we'd really have to take a really look at where that is, and usually that rests at committee. So, here we go again, in doing that government dance of things, and I am worried that November 1st is coming next week. So, how do we get from here to there? And it might mean a series of a special meeting, or otherwise, we don't have committees until the weekend of the 13th, or whatever that is, for that consideration. Then we do the dance back to county council at the end of November, again, pushing that forward. So, again, I'm seeking your wisdom, sir, as we move forward, and how we can assist or expedite the process.
I was going to suggest that we convene yourself, and myself, and Ms. Lapine, and Chair Jardini, and probably Chair Donahue, and Deputy Chief Grenier in the next little while, to work out an expedited schedule, so we can get it to a committee with an idea. And then, secondly, with the agreement of county council, a very quick, quick in terms of timing, not quick in terms of a meeting, virtually, one evening or during the day, just to deal with this issue, and then have a decision that we can forward on to Pembroke, and to Laurentian Valley, and to the Grind, and the faith-based community as well, so that we can start putting all of this together. And member from Amos and Bromley.
I'm unsure if I was necessarily following it. Is the intent that this would still go through committee, or is the expectation perhaps that a working group with an expedited schedule might be able to convene a special council meeting to give consideration to this, and not necessarily be taking it through committee?
Well, that's an even better shortcut. So, if, you know, if we could, yes, I think that's probably the best bet, is to get the working group together, and then bring it to a special council meeting. The, it's not going to be difficult to put together in terms of reference, and it'll be time-consuming, and with the groups, and just outline, you know, what a contract would look like. The difficult, or challenge will be finding the money internally. So, I think that's, you know, we'll need a little time for that. And then, to package the information in such a way that, you know, we understand it first, and then council understands it, and then we're able to communicate it to our potential partners. So, yeah, I think you're right, it's probably a good idea to have a small working group, get together as quickly as we can, and formulate a formal proposal.
And perhaps, Mr. Warden, at your authority, I think, because it's three weeks today before community services and health meet, and I think that it would be beneficial to advance that schedule, and perhaps even at that special council meeting, which, again, there is multiple opportunities through virtual attendance, that I think we can manage that with perhaps even a couple of options, so that we don't re-engage on having to send staff or the ad hoc group back again to give consideration, if there was a couple of options that might be presented. That would be my suggestion.
Okay, thank you. We'll target November 9th. We already have a council meeting to try, to have a proposal put forward. And just seeing that, unless somebody has any overwhelming desire to oppose that, we'll just go ahead with that as staff direction, if that's okay. All right, thank you. And I'm looking, I don't see anybody online with their hand up. Did I see the member from Bontravale?
It's okay, Warden. I think, thank you. I think everybody sort of said what I was thinking about, especially Counselor Purcell talking about the transfer payments, those actually pay for services, that are shared services. So, I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity for the mayor and the counselor to go back and share some of the cost. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm hopeful, once we move forward with a business plan based on their numbers, with a recommendation to county council, that that proposal will go back to the city, and the other partners. So, thank you very much. So, the immediate takeaway is that with Mayor Gervais, he and I will make a request for delegation firstly, and then, secondly, if I could, we'll also send out a request to United Way as well, together, if that's okay. Just, those are the first two steps that we can take and move this along. So, thank you for participating. This is a very unusual format for us, so we're feeling our way along in trying to respond to an emergency, trying to educate and make sure we get the information out at the same time. So, we certainly appreciate your patience. As you both understand, as the Colonel said about, sometimes government is like a large oil tanker, and we're just a bunch of little tugboats that push it off to the direction by pounding on the side of it. And so, thank you for your patience as we work through this, and for your passion in bringing it forward. And we'll move to correspondents.
Warden, all correspondence has, all correspondence has, oh my goodness, it's all gone to committees. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. I caught you by surprise, I caught it. And with that, I would ask the member from Killutagui Richards to talk about the delicacies he brought before we break for lunch.
Wow, what an intro that is. The table is full of circular dishes with, and there are plenty of treats, donuts. They were made this morning very early by Eva's Kitchen in Round Lake, and we'd like everyone to try one, if not one, if not two. So, enjoy yourself.
Thank you very much, and please extend our appreciation to Eva's Kitchen for their generous gift. With that, I would suggest we can break until 1:00, if that's okay with everybody? All right, thank you very much, everyone.
What did you say, Jennifer? Are you guys homesick too?
I've got infection in my legs, Jen. I'm barely able to move around. I was on crutches for two weeks.
You sound like me, Dave. I can't walk right now. I have something with my back and my SI joint and they're still trying to figure out...
I'm having trouble making my work payment. Okay, thank you. And with that, could we get a motion to go into closed if you don't mind for some very important reasons? I just have to find my agenda. Pursuit to Section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of a) to discuss the security of the property of the municipality, Renford County Housing Corporation update. Motion please. Member from Laurentian Hills seconded by a member from Brutonel Lindock Gregory. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you.
I've got infection in my legs, Jen. I'm barely able to move around. I was on crutches for two weeks.
You sound like me, Dave. I can't walk right now. I have something with my back and my SI joint and they're still trying to figure out-
I'm having trouble making my work payment. Okay, thank you. And with that, could we get a motion to go into closed if you don't mind for some very important reasons? I just have to find my agenda. Pursuit to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of a) to discuss the security of the property of the municipality, Renford County Housing Corporation update. Motion please. Member from Laurentian Hills seconded by a member from Brutonel Lindock Gregory. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. What did you say, Jennifer? Are you guys homesick too?
I've got infection in my legs, Jen. I'm barely able to move around. I was on crutches for two weeks.
You sound like me, Dave. I can't walk right now. I have something with my back and my SI joint and they're still trying to figure out-
I'm having trouble making my work payment. Okay, thank you. And with that, could we get a motion to go into closed if you don't mind for some very important reasons? I just have to find my agenda. Pursuit to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of a) to discuss the security of the property of the municipality, Renford County Housing Corporation update. Motion please. Member from Laurentian Hills seconded by a member from Brutonel Lindock Gregory. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. What did you say, Jennifer? Are you guys homesick too?
I've got infection in my legs, Jen. I'm barely able to move around. I was on crutches for two weeks.
You sound like me, Dave. I can't walk right now. I have something with my back and my SI joint and they're still trying to figure out-
I'm having trouble making my work payment. Okay, thank you. And with that, could we get a motion to go into closed if you don't mind for some very important reasons? I just have to find my agenda. Pursuit to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of a) to discuss the security of the property of the municipality, Renford County Housing Corporation update. Motion please. Member from Laurentian Hills seconded by a member from Brutonel Lindock Gregory. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. What did you say, Jennifer? Are you guys homesick too?
I've got infection in my legs, Jen. I'm barely able to move around. I was on crutches for two weeks.
You sound like me, Dave. I can't walk right now. I have something with my back and my SI joint and they're still trying to figure out-
I'm having trouble making my work payment. Okay, thank you. And with that, could we get a motion to go into closed if you don't mind for some very important reasons? I just have to find my agenda. Pursuit to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of a) to discuss the security of the property of the municipality, Renford County Housing Corporation update. Motion please. Member from Laurentian Hills seconded by a member from Brutonel Lindock Gregory. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. What did you say, Jennifer? Are you guys homesick too?
I've got infection in my legs, Jen. I'm barely able to move around. I was on crutches for two weeks.
You sound like me, Dave. I can't walk right now. I have something with my back and my SI joint and they're still trying to figure out-
I'm having trouble making my work payment. Okay, thank you. And with that, could we get a motion to go into closed if you don't mind for some very important reasons? I just have to find my agenda. Pursuit to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of a) to discuss the security of the property of the municipality, Renford County Housing Corporation update. Motion please. Member from Laurentian Hills seconded by a member from Brutonel Lindock Gregory. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. What did you say, Jennifer? Are you guys homesick too?
I've got infection in my legs, Jen. I'm barely able to move around. I was on crutches for two weeks.
You sound like me, Dave. I can't walk right now. I have something with my back and my SI joint and they're still trying to figure out-
I'm having trouble making my work payment. Okay, thank you. And with that, could we get a motion to go into closed if you don't mind for some very important reasons? I just have to find my agenda. Pursuit to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of a) to discuss the security of the property of the municipality, Renford County Housing Corporation update. Motion please. Member from Laurentian Hills seconded by a member from Brutonel Lindock Gregory. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. What did you say, Jennifer? Are you guys homesick too?
I've got infection in my legs, Jen. I'm barely able to move around. I was on crutches for two weeks.
You sound like me, Dave. I can't walk right now. I have something with my back and my SI joint and they're still trying to figure out-
I'm having trouble making my work payment. Okay, thank you. And with that, could we get a motion to go into closed if you don't mind for some very important reasons? I just have to find my agenda. Pursuit to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of a) to discuss the security of the property of the municipality, Renford County Housing Corporation update. Motion please. Member from Laurentian Hills seconded by a member from Brutonel Lindock Gregory. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. What did you say, Jennifer? Are you guys homesick too?
I've got infection in my legs, Jen. I'm barely able to move around. I was on crutches for two weeks.
You sound like me, Dave. I can't walk right now. I have something with my back and my SI joint and they're still trying to figure out-
I'm having trouble making my work payment. Okay, thank you. And with that, could we get a motion to go into closed if you don't mind for some very important reasons? I just have to find my agenda. Pursuit to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of a) to discuss the security of the property of the municipality, Renford County Housing Corporation update. Motion please. Member from Laurentian Hills seconded by a member from Brutonel Lindock Gregory. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. What did you say, Jennifer? Are you guys homesick too?
I've got infection in my legs, Jen. I'm barely able to move around. I was on crutches for two weeks.
You sound like me, Dave. I can't walk right now. I have something with my back and my SI joint and they're still trying to figure out-
I'm having trouble making my work payment. Okay, thank you. And with that, could we get a motion to go into closed if you don't mind for some very important reasons? I just have to find my agenda. Pursuit to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of a) to discuss the security of the property of the municipality, Renford County Housing Corporation update. Motion please. Member from Laurentian Hills seconded by a member from Brutonel Lindock Gregory. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. What did you say, Jennifer? Are you guys homesick too?
I've got infection in my legs, Jen. I'm barely able to move around. I was on crutches for two weeks.
You sound like me, Dave. I can't walk right now. I have something with my back and my SI joint and they're still trying to figure out-
I'm having trouble making my work payment. Okay, thank you. And with that, could we get a motion to go into closed if you don't mind for some very important reasons? I just have to find my agenda. Pursuit to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of a) to discuss the security of the property of the municipality, Renford County Housing Corporation update. Motion please. Member from Laurentian Hills seconded by a member from Brutonel Lindock Gregory. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. What did you say, Jennifer? Are you guys homesick too?
I've got infection in my legs, Jen. I'm barely able to move around. I was on crutches for two weeks.
You sound like me, Dave. I can't walk right now. I have something with my back and my SI joint and they're still trying to figure out-
I'm having trouble making my work payment. Okay, thank you. And with that, could we get a motion to go into closed if you don't mind for some very important reasons? I just have to find my agenda. Pursuit to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of a) to discuss the security of the property of the municipality, Renford County Housing Corporation update. Motion please. Member from Laurentian Hills seconded by a member from Brutonel Lindock Gregory. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. What did you say, Jennifer? Are you guys homesick too?
I've got infection in my legs, Jen. I'm barely able to move around. I was on crutches for two weeks.
You sound like me, Dave. I can't walk right now. I have something with my back and my SI joint and they're still trying to figure out-
I'm having trouble making my work payment. Okay, thank you. And with that, could we get a motion to go into closed if you don't mind for some very important reasons? I just have to find my agenda. Pursuit to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of a) to discuss the security of the property of the municipality, Renford County Housing Corporation update. Motion please. Member from Laurentian Hills seconded by a member from Brutonel Lindock Gregory. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. What did you say, Jennifer? Are you guys homesick too?
I've got infection in my legs, Jen. I'm barely able to move around. I was on crutches for two weeks.
You sound like me, Dave. I can't walk right now. I have something with my back and my SI joint and they're still trying to figure out-
I'm having trouble making my work payment. Okay, thank you. And with that, could we get a motion to go into closed if you don't mind for some very important reasons? I just have to find my agenda. Pursuit to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of a) to discuss the security of the property of the municipality, Renford County Housing Corporation update. Motion please. Member from Laurentian Hills seconded by a member from Brutonel Lindock Gregory. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. What did you say, Jennifer? Are you guys homesick too?
I've got infection in my legs, Jen. I'm barely able to move around. I was on crutches for two weeks.
You sound like me, Dave. I can't walk right now. I have something with my back and my SI joint and they're still trying to figure out-
I'm having trouble making my work payment. Okay, thank you. And with that, could we get a motion to go into closed if you don't mind for some very important reasons? I just have to find my agenda. Pursuit to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of a) to discuss the security of the property of the municipality, Renford County Housing Corporation update. Motion please. Member from Laurentian Hills seconded by a member from Brutonel Lindock Gregory. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. What did you say, Jennifer? Are you guys homesick too?
I've got infection in my legs, Jen. I'm barely able to move around. I was on crutches for two weeks.
You sound like me, Dave. I can't walk right now. I have something with my back and my SI joint and they're still trying to figure out-
I'm having trouble making my work payment. Okay, thank you. And with that, could we get a motion to go into closed if you don't mind for some very important reasons? I just have to find my agenda. Pursuit to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of a) to discuss the security of the property of the municipality, Renford County Housing Corporation update. Motion please. Member from Laurentian Hills seconded by a member from Brutonel Lindock Gregory. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. What did you say, Jennifer? Are you guys homesick too?
I've got infection in my legs, Jen. I'm barely able to move around. I was on crutches for two weeks.
You sound like me, Dave. I can't walk right now. I have something with my back and my SI joint and they're still trying to figure out-
I'm having trouble making my work payment. Okay, thank you. And with that, could we get a motion to go into closed if you don't mind for some very important reasons? I just have to find my agenda. Pursuit to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of a) to discuss the security of the property of the municipality, Renford County Housing Corporation update. Motion please. Member from Laurentian Hills seconded by a member from Brutonel Lindock Gregory. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. What did you say, Jennifer? Are you guys homesick too?
I've got infection in my legs, Jen. I'm barely able to move around. I was on crutches for two weeks.
You sound like me, Dave. I can't walk right now. I have something with my back and my SI joint and they're still trying to figure out-
I'm having trouble making my work payment. Okay, thank you. And with that, could we get a motion to go into closed if you don't mind for some very important reasons? I just have to find my agenda. Pursuit to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of a) to discuss the security of the property of the municipality, Renford County Housing Corporation update. Motion please. Member from Laurentian Hills seconded by a member from Brutonel Lindock Gregory. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. What did you say, Jennifer? Are you guys homesick too?
I've got infection in my legs, Jen. I'm barely able to move around. I was on crutches for two weeks.
You sound like me, Dave. I can't walk right now. I have something with my back and my SI joint and they're still trying to figure out-
I'm having trouble making my work payment. Okay, thank you. And with that, could we get a motion to go into closed if you don't mind for some very important reasons? I just have to find my agenda. Pursuit to section 239 of the Municipal Act 2001 as amended for the purpose of a) to discuss the security of the property of the municipality, Renford County Housing Corporation update. Motion please. Member from Laurentian Hills seconded by a member from Brutonel Lindock Gregory. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience as we entered into close to discuss an issue. With that, I would call on the Operations Committee Chair if you could report -- oh, I'm sorry. Oh yeah, it is, sorry, jeez. My apologies. Health, if I could call on health, please. I don't know why.
Sure enough, it's right there on that paper. To the council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of county council, we, your health committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. As information items, Mr. Chair. Item number one is with respect to the mental health addictions and homelessness. And as identified, we reviewed the draft terms of reference and the initial steps taken towards standing up the outreach, the health hub that will certainly have a large consideration and collaboration between the paramedic service and community services. And I think once again demonstrating leadership in addressing some pressing challenges within our community and innovation in adapting to those. Item number two is with respect to the emergency management program committee and for council's consideration, the health committee is essentially the owners, if you will, or the trustees of the emergency management plan, though in fact, the response to any emergency is going to be still facilitated through the emergency control group. Item three, Mr. Chair, is the annual volunteer recognition. And as you had noted in your warden's address at the outset of today's meeting, very pleased and honored at both the Miramichi Lodge and Bonneher Manor to have expressed our deepest gratitude towards the large number of volunteers that provide the vibrancy in both of these homes, that they are providing that unidentifiable thing that makes sure that these are homes and not facilities that individuals are living in. And each and every one of them are contributing in a fantastic way. And as I had noted at the time, anytime anyone is volunteering and touches one life, it is an enormous benefit to that person. Item number four is the acting administrator of Miramichi Lodge. Certainly needs to congratulate Bonneher Manor Administrator Dean Quad on his parenting and his new parenting and his parental leave moving forward. And congratulations and welcome to Nancy Lemire, who will be moving into the role in an acting position. Item number five, Mr. Ward, moving on to resolutions. Item five, the Rural Ontario Municipal Association Conference, resolution number H-CC-23-10-118, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that county council approve a delegation request at the 2024 Rural Ontario Municipal Association Annual Conference with the Honorable Sylvia Jones, Minister of Health, to discuss a mental health addictions and homelessness paramedic strategy. And further, that the chair of the standing committee, along with the warden, be designated to attend the delegation. Sorry, the delegation. And the background is attached, Mr. Warden. Item six is the Hydronic Distribution System upgrade for Miramichi Lodge, resolution number H-CC-23-10-120, moved by myself, seconded by committee, that county council award the Hydronic Distribution System Phase Four project as per the County of Renfrew GA 01 procurement of goods and services policy, section 20.7, for the quoted price of $143,029.47 exclusive of HST to Honeywell Limited for the replacement of Hydronic controllers with Backnet controllers, which was approved through the Miramichi Lodge 2023 capital budget. And once again, Mr. Chair, the background is attached. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as chair, along with committee members EMO, Grills, Jan, Murphy, Nicholson, Weir, and Wilmer.
Thank you. And to council, comments, questions, concerns on the following items. Item number one. Item two. Item three. Item number four. Item number five. And item number six. Seeing none, can I have the motion, please?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
You've heard the motion, you've heard the report. Any questions, comments, all those in favor? Opposed, none, it's carried, thank you very much. And we'll move over to operations at this time. Thank you. Chair?
I have that, actually. My apologies. Thank you, Warden. To the council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, we, your operations committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Item number one is the monthly project status report, attached appendix number one. Item number two, the capital program variance report, attached as appendix number two. Item number three, information around the winter readiness and the timelines involved. And I'll stop there, I think. No, just keep going, okay. So resolutions, item number four. Automated speed enforcement system, resolution number OPC C-2310-112, moved by chair, seconded by committee, that county council send a letter under the warden's signature to the Honorable Prabha Meeth Singh Shakira, Minister of Transportation, in support of the resolutions from Cramhee Township and the City of Cambridge in regards to amending S205.1 of the Highway Traffic Act to allow automatic speed enforcement, photo radar for other purposes, ASE systems permanently or temporarily on any roadway under the jurisdiction of the municipality. And just slight background, I know everybody can read, but currently they're only allowed in community safety zones, so this is requesting that it be expanded. Item number five, Highway 417 extension, extension traffic data, resolution number OPC C-2310-113, moved by chair, seconded by committee, the county council send a letter under the warden's signature to the Honorable Prabha Meeth Singh Shakira, Ministry of Transportation, Minister of Transportation, requesting updated traffic counts for specific sections of Highway 17, including the current Highway 417, Armpryor to Renfrew Twinning, Storyland Road to Greenland Road, Meath Hill to Deep River, and west of Deep River. And the background is there. Item number six, reallocation of 2023 budget funds, resolution number OPC C-2310-114, moved by chair, seconded by committee, the county council reassigned the sum of $60,000 originally designated in the 2023 budget for architectural design and review of the Southwest Patrol and Whitewater Road Patrol buildings towards the purchase of new pods/workstations for the Public Works and Engineering Department office located at the county administration building in Pembroke at a cost of $17,802.47. Council will recall that we created some new positions within the Public Works and Engineering Department. The $60,000 that was budgeted was budgeted to do some retrofits or upgrades to the patrol yards, and it was evaluated that those may not be needed at this time. And with the new staff, they need place to work, so. And with the new staff, they need a place to work, so it probably makes sense. And item number seven, Rural Ontario Municipal Association Roma Conference, resolution number OPC C-2310115, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, the county council approve delegation requests at the 2024 Rural Ontario Municipal Association's Roma Annual Conference with the Minister of Infrastructure to discuss implementation of a consistent provincial mandated pavement conditioning index, PCI, process with the Ministry of Transportation to discuss—and with the Minister to discuss—additional funding opportunities with regard to an interim solution for Highway 17, 417 widening and traffic calming beyond Renfrew. And further, that the Chair of the Standing Committee, along with the Warden, be designated to attend the delegations. The consistent provincial—the request on the provincial consistent PCI was something that we brought up at last year's conference, and it actually got some traction with the parliamentary assistance, so we thought it might be valuable to follow up on this, along with—I think it's in the background—but along with the province designating a PCI across the province, it makes the playing field level. But attached to that is we're asking for funding support to maintain that PCI across the province. Item number eight, County Road Two White Lake Road Speed Study, resolution number OPC C-2310117, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, the county council approves the recommendation that the posted speed limit remain unchanged at this time for County Road Two White Lake Road between Robertson Line and Green Meadow Road. And attached is—appendix five is the data that shows what the speed assessment gave us. And item number nine, Lynch Road Culvert County Structure Assumption Request, resolution number OPC C-2310118, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, the county council approve the assumption of Lynch Road Culvert on Lynch Road 0.1 kilometre west of Dragonfly Way in the township of Admiston Bromley be approved, and that further costs for design and construction of the Lynch Road Culvert be shared equally between the County of Renfrew and the township of Admiston Bromley, and further that staff be directed to complete the design and replacement of the Lynch Road Culvert and plan for replacement in 2024. This is a culvert that's been identified as meeting the county criteria as a county culvert, however, it's not in the county's asset pool at this time. So take that on, we would bring it up to a new standard and share the costs with the local municipality. Item number 10, County Road 512 Queen Street Community Safety Zone, the village of Killaloo, resolution number OPC C-2310116, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, the county council adopt a bylaw to authorise the designation of a community safety zone along Queen Street, County Road 512, between 87 Queen Street and Bolin Street, township of Killaloo, Hagerty and Richards. And the background has been provided there. And then I have an addendum. So item number 11—yes, it is. Item number 11, Public Works 2023-6, Three Tandem Truck Plow and Plow Units, resolution number OPC C-2310112, moved by Chair, seconded by committee, that county council approve the bid submitted by Gincor, Madowa, Ontario, for the acquisition of three tandem truck and plow units in the amount of $1,254,000, net $54,975 plus applicable taxes. And further, that the county council adopt a bylaw to authorise the execution of the contract, and further that the county council reassigns the sum of capital funds in the amount of $175,593 from the offset roller and road shouldering machine to the purchase of these three—sorry—tandem plow trucks and plow units. And the background is there. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and committee members Bennett, Emo, Lynch, Mackenzie, Watt, and Wilmer.
Thank you, Chair. And with that, members of county council, comments, questions, concerns on item number one, item two, item three, and the member from Admiston Bromley.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Mr. Perkins. Who is it that does the requiring? Is that our own policy, or is that some kind of statutory or regulatory requirement?
That is actually statutory, according to the minimum winter maintenance standards.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing nothing further. Item number four, please. Item five. Item number six. Item number seven. Number nine. And the member from Admiston Bromley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Request severance and separate consideration, please.
So item number nine is severed? Okay, thank you. Item number 10, and the member from Killaloo, Hagerty, Richards.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to thank the Director of Public Works, Lee Perkins, for putting up with my inexperience and showing a great deal of patience with me over this matter. This has been a very frustrating experience for me in regards to speeding, as we are all concerned with that subject throughout. We've attempted many alternatives to our speeding problem. We have settled on the community safety zones, which we are very grateful to get to this point. We wanted many more miles listed as safety zones. Unfortunately, there are restrictions which add to the frustrations. With the push on active transportation, people do not feel safe walking and biking along these roads no longer. We have many residents who want to participate, but unfortunately, they carry that fear with them. And again, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item number 11. So with that, a motion on the report without item number nine.
So moved.
So you've heard the motion, you've heard the report and the comments. Any further questions? All those in favor? Opposed, none, it's carried, thank you. And then item number nine, are you asking for a recorded vote or just a separate?
Yeah, I would—so I am just seeking a recorded vote. Does that have to be by means of a—no, I think I'm probably going to introduce a motion to amend, Mr. Chair, so as to have a more focused, focused, recorded vote. And similar to the consideration that county council gave to the McMinn Road Culvert, if memory serves, I'm not sure if that was in June or perhaps in September, or rather August. But I would like to—that this be amended, that the County of Renfrew assume all costs.
And you would need a seconded for that? Okay, and seconded by the member from Armpryor? So discussion? Member from McNab Brayside, and then Laurentian Hills.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm just curious where this fits in with precedent. If I could get a little bit more background on how the county has treated these situations in the past, that'd be appreciated.
Thank you. Mr. Perkins, I think you're the logical candidate.
Yes, thank you, Warden. I'm just looking for the revised bridge policy. So previously, the County of Renfrew, we used to have an annual daily traffic of 100 vehicles. So as you recall, we've changed the—we've changed the ruling now to that that doesn't affect it anymore. But in this case here, these are culverts that were located, that are within our purview of three metres or more. So we've never—we've never experienced this before because previous bridge policy was anything less than 100 cars a day wasn't discussed. But the county does have numerous bridges in our inventory that has much less than 100 cars a day that we have replaced, rebuilt, and paid for. So in this situation here, there is no precedence for how this works. It is within the bridge policy for someone to locate a bridge or culvert that's over three metres and ask for the county to upload it. The bridge policy does state that the municipality uploading will be responsible for 50% of the repair and construction. But I got to find that for sure. Please stand by.
Thank you. And Laurentian Hills and Admiston Bromley.
Thank you, Warden. I believe Mr. Perkins just answered my question. How did we get from funding nothing to funding 50%, now funding 100%?
Mr. Perkins, or will I go ahead to Mr.?
Well, I'm going to pass this along to Mr. Perkins.
Thank you. Actually, I'm just looking for the proper wording in the bridge policy.
If I might, Mr. Warden, the policy itself, I believe we will find out from Mr. Perkins, is what has identified the policy as being 50%. We haven't gotten to 100%. That's what's before us. If I might, while Mr. Perkins continues to investigate, at your pleasure, Mr. Warden, ultimately, I'm moving this because—and I'm not in disagreement with the policy, I understand the policy. Unlike perhaps, say, my colleague from McNab Brayside, this is dissimilar from a road. This culvert has not grown on its own, unlike the traffic count that will grow on a road that is going to lead to its conversion and potential consideration for upload to the county. And this bridge is not—sorry, this culvert is not undersized, it is in excess of three metres. If we had in fact identified this culvert 15 years ago as meeting that three metres, it would not be in a state of disrepair that needed to repair, and I cannot conceive that there would have been a prorating of—an anticipation of when it might be in a state of disrepair. So ultimately, how I distinguish this, and likewise, the McMinn Road that had been previously considered by council, is that this always should have been a county structure by dint of it already meeting that three-metre requirement, and that in fact, it was an oversight that at the time of the trade-off that was happening with respect to different assets, vis-à-vis lower tier, upper tier, had this been included in the inventory that presumably the township of Bromley and/or Admaston provided to the county, it would have been done at that time. So ultimately, that is what I am predicating the request on, is that it was an oversight, that this was not uploaded to the county prior to today, and that it is not like it has suddenly become a three-metre culvert. It's been a three-metre culvert, I anticipate, for something in excess of 40 or 50 years. And it only came to our attention within our municipality that it was a three-metre culvert at the time that we were investigating for a road upgrade on the Lynch Road. So that is what I am predicating the motion to amend, and hopefully, that provides some answer to why I am proposing this, to the member from Laurentian Hills.
Laurentian Hills, please.
So regardless of why it has not been deemed a county culvert, in those 15 years, it would have been the responsibility of the municipality to upkeep it. And I don't believe that—I'm just—it just seems to me that this is not right, that we should be following the policy for 50%. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Perkins, please.
Thank you, Warden, and through you to committee. So the actual wording is following approval of the assumption of proposed replacement crossing as a county structure, so this would be going into the county's inventory. The cost of the design and the construction of the replacement structure shall be shared equally between the County of Renfrew and the local municipality. So that's from our PWO2 bridge policy that we revised in April of 2023.
Thank you. And the Chair, did I see your hand?
Yeah, thank you, Warden. So recognizing the fact that—and I'll take it on my colleague's word—that it was 15 years ago, we currently have an assumption policy, or wording within the policy about the assumption of structures. And I don't believe that just because there was a municipal oversight that didn't identify this, that we should go against a current policy of the county.
Member Admiston Bromley?
To be clear, I'm not—the 15-year, I think I might have been just suggesting as an argument, Mr. Warden, and I was not predicating it, I would be hopeful that this has been installed much longer than 15 years. Ultimately, the basis of the argument that I am making is that ultimately, any culvert is going to fail. From the time that it's installed, it begins to fail. So it is degrading over time. So had we in fact measured this culvert 15 years ago and determined, oh, this is a three-metre culvert, we should initiate the process for this to be assumed by the county, there would have been no cost, unless in fact, there is an inspector that is going to attempt to forecast when it is anticipated to fail and what the cost may be at that state, at which point then, in order to assume it, there would be a cost associated with that. That is what I am basing this on. Ultimately, and I am certainly accepting that this policy will apply in this situation, but I believe that the policy was written as if you had a culvert that was undersized but should be meeting the standard of three metres, in which case now you do have to upgrade that culvert to a three-metre culvert from a 2.6 metre, and that seems reasonable. What I am suggesting is this never was undersized, it was always of a size sufficient to have been part of the inventory of the County of Renfrew. In any event, Mr. Warden, that is the entirety of the argument, and I'm quite prepared to be subject to the will of council.
Thank you. Any further comments, questions? A member from Peddawawa, and then from Armpryor.
Thank you, Chair. Through you. I think the member beside me here had a good point, that we do have a policy in place that states that 50% cost should be shared in any event. What we have to be careful of here is setting a precedent, that if this policy should get overturned at this particular time, that we'll have 17 municipalities going back home and asking their directors of public works to go out and find me a three-metre wide culvert that is not already taken over by the county, and there may be a deluge of similar requests.
Thank you. And member from Armpryor.
Thank you, Warden. I'm thinking back in the past that this was brought forward under culverts, and that we have 150,000 culverts within the County of Renfrew. And I thought someone from Public Works had actually gone out and found all these culverts that wouldn't meet the standard. Once that was done, they were identified as three metres or more, and then because the number of culverts that met that, we in turn decided to get a new engineer that could be used to facilitate the criteria to make this culvert. So having said that, this is three metres, it must have been missed somehow, and to me, it's the county's culvert. Thank you.
Okay. And so with that—
Recorded vote, please.
Recorded vote, all right. With that, could I have the question read back, if you don't mind, please? The motion?
Yep, as I understand it, Warden, the resolution OPC C-23-10-118 is amended to read that county council approve the assumption of Lynch Road Culvert on Lynch Road, 0.1 kilometres west—
Road, uh, 0.1 kilometers west of Dragonfly Way in the township of Abbotson Bromley be approved, and further that the cost for design and construction of Lynch Road culvert be borne entirely by the County of Renfrew, and further that staff be directed to complete the design for the replacement of Lynch Road culvert and plan for replacement in 2024. Do I have that correct? Thank you. So that was moved by, uh, the member from Abbotson Bromley and seconded by the member from, uh, Armpur. So I'll start the recorded vote from the member of Abbotson Bromley.
In favor, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Lynch?
In favor?
Thank you. Um, Counselor Bennett?
In favor?
Thank you. Counselor Bros?
In favor?
Counselor Doncaster?
Opposed.
Uh, Ward Nemo?
Opposed.
Uh, Counselor Jardini?
Opposed.
Counselor Grills?
In favor?
Counselor Yon?
Opposed.
Counselor McKenzie?
In favor?
Counselor Mayville?
Opposed.
Counselor Murphy?
Opposed.
Counselor Nicholson?
Favor.
Counselor Service?
Opposed.
Counselor Watt?
Opposed.
Counselor Weir?
In favor?
Counselor Wilmer?
Opposed.
The motion fails from 124 to 97.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and Mr. Kelly.
And so with that, do we now vote on item nine as its stance?
Yes.
Okay. So with, uh, so that, uh, if I could have the Chair make that motion, please, for item number nine?
So moved.
Thank you. So you've heard lots of discussion, and we have the motion in front of us. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried? Thank you very much. And we'll move to Community Services. I think is the next, yes, it is. Community Services, please.
Thank you, Warden. To the Council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of County Council, we, your Community Services Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information item number one, the National Housing Accord, a multi-sector approach to ending Canada's rental housing crisis. Um, this was discussed at, uh, Renfrew County Housing Corporation, and I know that the, uh, Warden, uh, mentioned that this was one of his favorite documents, and which has a lot of, um, good information in it. It is not attached to this, uh, agenda, but it is attached to the Renfrew County Housing Corporation, if anybody's interested in looking at it. Item number two, Built for Zero Canada, acknowledgement. Um, so the County of Renfrew was recognized, um, sorry, built for zero Canada acknowledgement. So attached as appendix one is the letter from Built for Zero Canada that recognize the Canada, the County of Renfrew for reducing chronic homelessness. There's also a chart, um, attached to this for information. Resolutions, Rural Ontario Municipal Association Conference, resolution number CSCC 23 dash 1041, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council approve delegation request at the 2024 Roma Annual Conference with the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing and Associate Minister of Housing to discuss additional funding opportunities to increase housing in our community, and further that the Chair of the Standing Committee, along with the Warden, be designated to attend the, the delegation. Information item number four, or sorry, resolution number four, Social Services Fiscal Pressure Reserve, resolution number CSCC 23 dash 1043, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council approve that any changes to Ontario Works Administration components of the upcoming Ontario Works budget that exceed the budgeted amounts be funded from the Social Services Fiscal Pressure Reserve. And the background is all there. Bylaw number five, National Housing Strategy 2023 dash 24 allocations, moved by Chair, seconded by Committee, that County Council approve the confirmed 2023, 24, and planned 2024, 25 confirmed funding allocations for the provincially delivered National Housing Strategy initiatives, and further that a bylaw be adopted authorizing the Warden and CAO clerk to execute the amended transfer payment agreement for the Canada-Ontario Community Housing Initiative, known as COCHI, and the Ontario Priorities Housing Initiative, OFI, and, and Canada-Ontario Housing Benefit Programs between the County of Renfrew and the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. And the background is there. All of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and Committee Members Ema, Grills, Mayville, Nicholson, and Service.
Thank you, Chair. And with that, counsel, uh, comments, questions, concerns on item number one? This is a great document. Uh, it's, uh, it's current, and it, uh, identifies, um, significant rent increases in the last seven years. I believe the number is the rent increased on a one-bedroom across Canada by 32%, and the, uh, uh, rise in income over that same period was something like 23%. So there's quite a, quite a gap. It also identified nine recommendations and subrec, and there were four or five sub-recommendations about moving forward, and it talks about, uh, the province and the federal government and municipal government. So it's one of the first papers that identified the three levels have to work together and some of the things that can be done, so it's, it's a, it is a very good document. Item number two, uh, and the member from North Agona Wilderforce.
Thank you, Warden, and I just wanted to congratulate the, uh, staff that, uh, have been working on this Built for Zero program and Director Lapine. It's nice to see that, uh, the county was recognized for, uh, reducing our numbers. And, um, keeping in mind the discussion this morning, I, I do wanna say that the county certainly is doing their part to address the homelessness issue, and, uh, it's nice to get this acknowledgement as well. So once again, thank you.
Thank you. Item number, uh, three, please. Item four? Item five? The report as a whole? Could I have a mover, please?
So moved.
Thank you. You've heard the report, you've heard the discussion. I'm gonna call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried? Thank you, counsel. And we'll move to Development and Property, please.
Thank you, Warden. And beginning on page 227, to the Council of the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of County Council, we, your Development and Property Committee, wish to report and recommend as follows. Information item number one is the Warden's Community Service Awards. Um, I just wanna say this is fast approaching, and, uh, just a reminder as well to all of County Council to let staff know if you plan to attend and if you're bringing, uh, a partner. Item number two is the Fall Promotional Campaigns, and, uh, just want to highlight the, uh, Ottawa Valley Tourist Association is promoting the harvest season, which, uh, is on culinary-themed events, as well as the Fall Farm and Flavors Tour. And once again, municipalities are reminded to submit your event listings on the calendar for inclusion in future campaigns. Item number three is the Enterprise Renfrew County Rebrand, and again, the, uh, staff are working on this to update the logo and the website, and, uh, the additional information is attached. Item number four is the 2024 Harvest Tenders for our Renfrew County Forests, and, um, the bids will be closing on November 9th, 2023. Item number five is the Black Ash Protection Measures, and, um, there is two attachments regarding the, uh, black ash and its habitat, and they are, uh, attached, and the links are there for, uh, your review. Item number six is the Town of Deep River Official Plan Amendment, number four, OPA four, and the county has provided approval for the Town of Deep River to adopt this amended, uh, and, uh, Deep River Plan. Again, the, uh, information is attached. Item number seven is the Town of Deep River Official Plan Amendment, number five, OPA five. Once again, the information is there for your review. Item number eight is Granite Village Subdivision Approval, and again, the, um, this was drafted for and issued for approval for two subdivisions on the east and west side of Norton Road in the township of Greater Matawaska. Item number nine is a Digital Raster Acquisition Project for Eastern Ontario, um, Drape 2024, and, uh, again, it's just, uh, letting County Council know that the, uh, County of Renfrew staff attended the kickoff meeting to participate and, uh, bring this, bring this project forward. Item number 10 is the Flood Plane Hazard Mapping Project. Once again, this is something that, uh, the County Council has approved, and, uh, the work will be progressing in the future. Moving on to Resolutions, number 11 is the Rural Ontario Municipal Association Roma Conference, resolution number DP dash CC 23 dash 10 dash 115, moved by myself, seconded by Committee, that County Council approve the delegation requests at the 2024 Rural Ontario Municipal Association Annual Conference with the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing to discuss additional funding opportunities with regards to proposed solutions to housing, including the Modular Seniors Village Project and Proposed Habitat for Humanity Partnership, and with the Ministry of Tourism, Culture, and Sport to advocate for a more accurate funding model and provide support as necessary for the Ontario Highlands Tourism Organization Partners, which include the counties of Renfrew, Alaberton, Lanark, Frontenac, Hastings, and Lennox and Addington, and further that the Chair of the Standing Committee, along with the Warden, be designated to attend the delegations. Again, the background is attached. And item number 12, an addendum, is bylaw PWC 2023 dash 61, Algonquin Trail, Granular A, resolution number DP CC 23 10 123, moved by myself, seconded by Committee, that County Council approve contract PWC 2023 dash 61 as submitted by McCray Excavation Limited, Pembroke, Ontario, for the supply, delivery, and placement of granular A on the Algonquin Trail from County Road 55, Paquette Road, to approximately 12.33 kilometers north in the towns of Petawawa and Laurentian Hills in the amount of $499,301.35 plus applicable taxes, and further that County Council adopt a bylaw to authorize execution of the contract. All of this which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and Committee Members Bennett, Eamon, Lynch, McKenzie, Service, Watt, and Weir.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, members of County Council, your questions, comments, concerns regarding item number one? I'll just remind you that the deadlines for the nominations are November 3rd, which is next week, and three categories are community contributions, uh, for individuals, not-for-profit organizations, and for-profit business. So again, uh, thank you for your consideration and effort in putting this forward. Number two, item number two. Item number three. Item number four. Item five. Item number six. Item number seven. Item number eight. Item number nine. Item 10. Item 11. And then the member from Laurentian Hills, please.
Um, I guess I'd like some clarification because the top part of this resolution is the same as the one we saw at Community Services. So if we are both granted delegations, do we go together? We, I mean, the two chairs of the Standing Committee?
Yeah.
Through you, Warden, to, uh, to Counselor Jardini, they are different. Um, this one's the, if, if I can, the Community Services wants us to meet with the Minister to talk about additional funding opportunities to increase housing, and the one for development of property is specific to the habitat one and the, um, uh, the modular, uh, village one. So I think, I think what we're hoping to is talk to the Minister about, gosh, just funding for our regular units to, to renovate them and keep them going, as you've heard throughout the day. Uh, and then this other one is to talk about new initiatives and new, new partnerships. So they're, they're slightly different.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, did I see my friend from North Agona Wilderforce?
Thank you, Warden, and I just wanted to apologize for my confusion on item number one, the Warden's Community Service Awards, because I was thinking of the Staff Appreciation and Service Recognition Awards, so I got that confused. My apologies.
No problem. It caused a little consternation here, if I'll be honest with you. I was thinking, do I have the wrong agenda? Anyway, thank you. Uh, item number 12, and the counselor, or member from Whitewater, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just a question. It talks about type A granular? That's correct? Is that, that's what we're putting down before the stone dust? If we can confirm that, please?
Mr. Davis?
Uh, through you, and if Lee doesn't mind that, I threw you, so this is the main base of, of the trail. Because we're going through the Garrison lands or the TransCanada pipelines, it's different than we typically do on an abandoned rail corridor where there's ballast there already, so this will be our base. And then when, and when in the future, we'll put granular, or sorry, stone dust on top to make it cyclable. That answers your question.
Yeah, perfect. And, and my calculation is about $41,000 a kilometer? Is that, did I do the math right? And Mr. Davis?
I, I trust your math calculation, so I'll, I'll say yes.
Thank you. And- Thank you, Chair. The member from Deep River, please.
Uh, thank you, Warden, Eamon. Um, within the trails policy, I believe we had a policy within there, or a statement within the policy, um, that allowed any municipality to provide a bypass if they didn't want the trail to go through their community. Why is this different, that the Garrison is not providing the replacement trail because they don't want us going through their property?
Sure. I'll take a stab at this one, as Jason looks at me and helps bail him out. Um, uh, through you to the council member, um, so this is an interesting one, uh, for those maybe not as, um, uh, don't have the history of this trail. There is a railway line that runs along Highway 17, as we all can acknowledge when we made our trip up there last month. Um, that trail did not revert to our ownership, uh, when we did all the other transfers because it, it pre-existed the, um, the, the establishment of, of the rail line and the Garrison was around a long way before the, the rail line. Um, so in order to keep a contiguous trail, we had to find an alternate route, and the pipeline is that alternate route. Um, they are providing the land, uh, a lease, I don't think there's a payment on that lease, I think it's a, like a dollar, the nominal fee for that. So in essence, they are providing that workaround, um, but there is no, there's no extra money from Garrison nor other engineering help. Um, they've provided maybe some nominal help once in a while, maybe on some design work, but that's about it, and some environmentals. Um, however, uh, Ga, um, Petawawa didn't ask for this workaround, and Garrison Petawawa is not a municipality, so I suppose there's a very gray area there that, that we, it didn't fall into anything else.
And the member from Deep River wants to discuss the gray area?
Yeah, no, that's fine. Um, just wanna point out that, uh, where the trail is being located is where the current snowmobile trail goes, so.
I should have completed my thought. So, uh, on the railway line that currently exists, um, Garrison Petawawa felt at the time we're designing this, uh, regardless of whether there's ownership or a cloud on title or otherwise, that that current railway line is, is too close in proximity to range control or where they, as the Colonel said today, where things go boom and bang, uh, that they didn't want pedestrians or cyclists to wander off into basically a militarized zone. So that's, that's why it's safer where it is. And it's, to the point earlier, it's, it's- And it's, to the point earlier, it's pure sand. We're building a trail on absolute pure sand that we have to build up a base, probably about a foot of base to put B gravel and then A gravel and then some other, other top surface on top of that.
Any further questions? So you've heard the report. Can I have a mover, please?
So moved, Mr. Warden.
You've heard the report and the questions?
He didn't ask. Oh, no, sorry, he didn't. Look, he didn't have those, sir.
Yep. And the member from Deep River, please.
Thank you, Warden, Eamon. I apologize I missed something. I don't know if it's specific to the item number, whatever it was, the OVTA, but there was a presentation done in Deep River by the Economic Development Department recently that spoke of, I believe, the OVTA strategic plan that's moving forward. The question I had is, will lower-tier municipalities get an opportunity for input into that strategic plan? I'm not sure I need the answer right at the moment. And then just the other item that I missed was the black ash. I think it was item number five, surrounding, you may not have noticed it when development property and operations visited Deep River, but most of the ornamental trees that we put around the Deep River Town Hall are ash trees. But since Lacy was there that day, I asked her to look at them, and they're not black ash, and there's no sign of animal ash bor on them whatsoever, so.
Thank you.
Not yet.
So we'll have maybe just a question on the OVTA?
If I may, Warden, through you. So it's not OVTA. It's more the economic development strategy. So yes, part of a communication plan and part of the discussion will be engaging local municipalities and agencies to help us out with this strategy moving forward.
Thank you. With that, I'll call the vote for the report. All those in favor? Opposed, none, it's carried. Thank you very much. And we'll move to Finance and Admin. Chair, please.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. To the council, the Corporation of the County of Renfrew, members of County Council, we your Finance and Administration Committee wish to report and recommend as follows. Under information under number one, there was a municipal shared services meeting on October 5th. I understand it was very freakful. Number two is Watson and Associates, the development charges, and there is information in your package on responses from the various municipalities. And number three is the 2024 budget schedule. Just as a reminder, everybody, November 9th, we do have a special meeting of County Council. Number four is the Fall Tax Policy Working Group. Number five is the Municipal Benefits Committee. Number six are the 2023 Service Awards. And everybody remember to book your ticket for November 30th at 7:00 PM at Pembroke Festival Hall. That should be a lot of fun. Under Resolutions, Resolution Number FACC 23-10-87, moved by myself as Chair, seconded by committee, the County Council approve a delegation request at the 2024 Rural Ontario Municipal Association Annual Conference with the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing and or the Minister of Finance to discuss additional funding opportunities with regards to continuous improvements and modernization, i.e. the municipal modernization fund, building on the success of previous funding streams. And further, that the Chair of the Standing Committee, along with the Warden, be designated to attend the delegation. Number eight, bylaw to appoint a treasurer, Resolution Number FACC 23-10-88, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, the County Council approve Daniel Burke be appointed as the acting treasurer for the County of Renfrew effective November 20th, 2023, and further, that the necessary bylaw be adopted. And number nine, Resolution Number FACC 23-10-90, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, the County Council approve the amended corporate policy for tangible capital assets, FIN-07, asset retirement obligations, and further, that a bylaw to amend, bylaw 4-08, being a bylaw to establish corporate policies and procedures for tangible capital assets for the County of Renfrew be adopted. And the background is there. And number 10, Resolution Number FACC 23-10-91, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, the County Council approve the following changes to employment bylaw, number one, effective October 1st, 2023. Number one, change the student wage from 1460 to 1560 for students under 18, and change from 1550 to 1655 for students 18 and over as outlined in Schedule A, and further, the revised employment bylaw be adopted. Number 11, Resolution Number FACC 23-10-92, moved by the Chair, seconded by committee, the County Council approve the following amended corporate policies, A08, criminal record check policy for all prospective County of Renfrew volunteers and RCHC contractors, A12, photograph identification for employees, A13, termination and resignation, A14, retirement and early retirement, A15, code of ethical conduct, A18, personal use of social networking, B2, promotion, B3, establishment of new positions, B7, payroll, B8, uniform and safety footwear allowance, E1, hours of work and overtime, and E4, vacation effective January 1st, 2024. And there's quite a bit of background there for your information, all of which is respectfully submitted by myself as Chair and Committee members, Rose Don, Castor, Dunne, Hugh, Emo, Jardini, Yon, and Madhav. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you. And Chair, you made the right decision to stay at home today. Thank you. So Committee, Council, would you, I'll turn your attention to the report. Any comments, questions on item number one? I'm sorry? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Whitewater, I was looking at the screen.
Thanks, Chair. Just, I think the CAO was the one who led that, that meeting. I'm just curious, the report lists three ongoing challenges, and I just wanted to confirm, those are the top three amongst all three, all the participants? Retention, resource capacity? I'm just looking for some more information if we could expand on that.
Through you, Warden. Absolutely. No, that was just, it doesn't necessarily list into saying that overall, I think all of our municipalities are experiencing challenges with, with respect to those three. So our conversation that day was about, about much more than that. Recruitment and retention is a big deal, right? We're all hunting the same applicants for many jobs now. And it's, I think that's a main concern amongst all 18, 19 municipalities, quite honestly, because it include the county as a municipality and the city of Pembroke, right? Is 19 municipalities hunting for basically the same employee? Although we did talk about it, that it's, you know, sometimes you gotta go to grow, and we still encourage people to move around and explore those opportunities where necessary. But trying to recruit from abroad or recruit into the county is proving difficult for all of us, and we're all doing it using our scarce resources of salaries and keep wanting to up one another. So it's, it's creating a bit of an issue. Resource capacity was about resourcing our own staff. We are all challenged with situations where we don't have, we are tasked with more efforts with fewer staff or not enough time for staff. So we talked about sharing or creating a mutual aid agreement for just municipal services across. You know, we all have mutual aid or many of us have mutual aid for emergency services, but why not have mutual aid for treasury or human resources or otherwise? So that was talked about. And just, just the pace of information, the public and, and sometimes the elected want information faster and, and results quicker. So we're just talking about a shared repository of that information that we can all share from and grab that information from moving forward. So overall, it was really well represented, and I think it was some great conversations. We're looking forward to some smaller working groups, don't know what that will look like in the future, on working on particular issues as we move, move beyond today.
Counselor supplementary?
Thank you, Chair. I, I really, I thank, I thank the CAO and the staff for taking the time to bring people together to have those conversations. I think it's tremendously worthwhile, and I know we can't wave a magic wand and solve the solutions, but discussing them hopefully is the first step. So yeah, fully support the initiative, and thanks so much for investing the time in it.
And the member from Petawawa, please.
Thank you, Chair. Through you. And if I could just add that the municipality of Petawawa has used, well, collaborated with and had an association with the county's HR department for about a year ongoing now, and the relationship has been fantastic. The services we've acquired have been excellent, and may I say affordable, too. So it's been a great relationship, and it's a good example of shared services functioning.
And I should add, and I see the councillor, the member from Deep River, I should add the Town of Renfrew's had one for a little over a year now, and it was a model that I wasn't in favor of initially. I had a much broader vision, but Mr. Foss convinced me otherwise, and it's been excellent. We've used HR with contract negotiations, with grievances, with terminations, with hires, with promotion. So it's been, it's been very effective, and in fact, we're probably gonna come back and ask for more, because we have other needs right now. But it's, it's worked out really well, and again, it's a good example of what you can do with, by sharing the resources and being honest about what you need and laying it out in a work plan. And if I can just make comment on the meeting, I don't have the sense, there's a sense of urgency in that room that day to do something. There was a lot of, a lot of reaching out very slowly to take one cracker and a bit of cheese and offer some advice and run off to the corner. So I'm hoping that they'll stand over the cheese and crackers a little longer and start making plans and start working together, but the conversation started. I'm a little impatient because I think we've been talking about it amongst the political chattering class now for probably six years, and would like to see it go a little faster, but we'll wait it out and make sure it gets done right. So with that, the member from Deep River.
Thank you, Warden, Eamon. And not, not to get into the weeds of any of those discussions, but similarly, the Town of Deep River has used the county's HR in the past. Most of us use the planning department. You know, so there's, there's certainly, well, precedent's not the right word, but it certainly does go on. But you know, a lot of those smaller municipalities, like we don't have the workload that would, that would require an HR department, or maybe an HR person, or an IT department, or an IT person. It's not a full-time job. So you know, there's some capacity things there. And I think one of the challenges is, you know, if, if the Town of Deep River needed to compete with the Town of Petawawa, then Renfrew wouldn't have the highest tax rate in Renfrew County anymore.
And the best service, by the way, that's a debate. That's the message I'm giving today. So thank, thank you. Yeah, don't go there. The budgets aren't over yet. So with that, thank you very much. We'll move on to item number two, and I'll try and best not to slag my friend from Deep River. Item number three, budget. Item number four, and again, November 9th is gonna be a very important day with the Asset Management Plan Review, Long-Term Financing Review. So with that, the member from Whitewater?
Sorry, I was still, I felt like I got a bucket of cold water with that last comment. So my goodness, I'm not in his sights. Good. Number three, I just wanted to confirm, I'm really looking forward to the discussion on November 9th, and I just want to confirm, it's not, we're gonna be related to just the comment, the discussion we had on DCs and what was covered by DCs. This is full asset management. All the assets in the, in the, in the county will be reviewed for their long-term finances. Perfect.
Yes, it's separate from DCs and all the other conversations. It has to be held in the future once we fully understand our needs.
And, and sorry, just to make sure, it includes 50/50 stuff like ambulances?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kelly?
Well, yeah, well, and to be fair and through you, the Warden and the Chair of Finance are getting an update on what that presentation is gonna look like a little bit later today. And Mr. Foss and Mr. Burke have been working very hard on this presentation. Predominantly, if I could, Jeff, is that it's going to be focused on the, on the Long-Term Financial Plan and Asset Management Plan. DCs is over here, that we, it's been parked for a bit until you fully understand our Long-Term Financial Plan and our Asset Management Plan moving forward. DCs is one option of many on how to fund items of growth or of otherwise. So what we are directed to do, and Mr. Foss and Mr. Burke are doing, is bringing up an update of those plans that were in, I won't say in question, but at least an updated version that we've last experienced in 2017 or something like that. So more of that. DCs, again, has been parked somewhat as a conversation until, as I heard last meeting, until maybe budget time in February or January.
And supplementary, please, and then Mr. Foss.
Thank you, Chair. And I just, sorry, DCs, I threw it out there just as the reference point for what was discussed for assets in that discussion. I completely concur. It's the how that is a later discussion. I just know that our Long-Term Financial Plan right now is very focused on roads, and rightfully so, it's, it's a significant portion of it. But I want to make sure that it's including what we can do about housing and ambulances and culverts and all of, all of our assets, not just roads. That's what I was hoping for. Thank you.
And Mr. Foss?
Thank you, Warden. I'm happy to confirm that you're going to get both barrels on November the 9th. We've had an asset management plan for a long time that dealt with our three biggest categories, linear assets, buildings, as well as fleet. Some of the Ontario regulatory changes that are in, in place before all of us now require that by July of 2024, we need asset management plans for every asset that we own, including all the way down to your equipment items. And so on November the 9th, we will present to you a full asset listing and condition ratings for every asset that we are responsible for in the County of Renfrew. We'll talk really, a little bit of history of how we got to where we are and some of the things that have been done previously. We'll actually get a lot of involvement from my colleagues in other departments that will talk to you about their assets, their condition rating, how do we, how do we compare one asset to another, what indexes we use? And then, as the Warden said, we'll dedicate a significant portion of our day to how do we pay for all of this and what are the options available to us? We'll talk about development charges for growth assets, but that will be somewhat separated from the main body of the discussion, so we understand they're there. But we will be looking at today our existing infrastructure and the state of the nation, if you will. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. And seeing no further comment on item number three, we'll move to item number four. Item five. Item six, again, just a reminder of that significant evening on November 30th. It's a brand-new format for us. Looks like a lot of fun, so please sign up as fast as you can. Item number seven, Roma, another significant event for us. And item number eight. Item number nine. Item 10. Item 11. I really thought people dig into those 27 pages of policy, but I guess not. With that, could I have a motion, please?
Yes.
Thank you. You've heard the report and the discussion. All those in favor? Opposed, none, it's carried. Thank you. Before we move away from finance, I should make an announcement that I know everybody is dying to hear, except for one person. Today is Mr. Foss's birthday. So congratulations, Mr. Foss. Soon to be the most current Homer's employee. Thank you very much. And with that, if I could have a motion to move, and a second, or sorry, that the bylaws listed on item 13 and attached hereto on the County Council Agenda dated October 25, 2023, be deemed read three times and passed. So mover, please. Counselor from Bonshire Valley, seconded by a Counselor from Matawaska Valley. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, none, it's carried. Thank you. And with that, I'll call the vote for the report. It's carried. Thank you. And we'll move to number fourteen, written reports. I do not have one for Emo. Chalk River?
Thank you, Warden. My report's on page three-three-three, and I apologize for the three-hundred-and-fifty pages of annex to read, but you had to be there in person to see it. So on the twentieth of September, we attended the Long-Term Safety of Nuclear Power Demonstration Facility. It was hosted by Michael Giardini, and this seminar dealt with the long-term safety of the nuclear power demonstration and how it will affect the future. A license for this LTD is in progress, it has a hundred-year lifespan. What's noted is there was a picture of the facility with the groundwater leaving through the property into the Ottawa River, and it gave percentages of how much radiation was going to go to animals, people, buildings, whatnot. Interesting read. On the twelfth of October, we had the Environmental Stewardship Council, meeting number fifty-two, and that's where this three-hundred-and-thirty-eight pages comes in. The highlights were the Director of Corporate Communication, Pat Quinn, has retired. His position is now being shared by Mitch McKay and Phil Compass. The terms of reference are to be reviewed and commented for the next meeting. What we're going to do is ask for a code of conduct for the people on this committee. There are now twelve canisters located at CNL for future temporary storage of high-level fuel. We're the only people holding this until it's ready to go somewhere, and no one seems to know where. Artificial intelligence robot, robot, has been developed to identify recyclable materials. CNL has over three-hundred monitoring sites and has sixty years of data, waste inventory viewed every three years. As mentioned earlier, masked timber is being used instead of steel cement due to its strength during fires. On the seventh of September, CNL hosts a very successful Organisation of Canadian Nuclear Industry Day. Of note, there were two-hundred-and-fifty attendees with sixty vendors. The first of November, CNL Midterm Twenty-Twenty-Two Regulatory Oversight Review will take place in Gatineau, where you have an opportunity to make voice your opinion. CNL offers science literacy visits to local libraries through CNL Public Relations. That's Melissa Breeze, call her and she'll come and do a presentation. And lastly, Warden, was on the October nineteenth, the CNL offered a tour movie of the new Science Collaboration Centre. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Comments? North Agona Wilberforce, and then Deep River, please.
Thank you, Warden, and through you, to Counselor Lynch, I'm just curious if they gave an update on the near-surface waste disposal facility timeline for approval, if there's any new information.
At this point, there's no, no new information. The biggest challenge right now is AECL controls CNL, and ACEL has to have a new owner, which includes SNL, Lavalin, and three other people, or three other companies, and their, their term expires in December, so they're trying to get a new owner to take over CNL. CNL employees will not change, but the hierarchy will. So that's their, their focus. The next step is they're still trying to get a license, and with the new power, the modular power generator is in the same venue that they're trying to get that done, so there's a lot of things being tried to do, and there is no timeline, other than the hundred-year thing is a hundred years from now.
Thank you. And with that, member from Deep River.
Thank you, Warden, Emo. Just to comment on item number three, to start with, well, I guess it's all about number three based on the comments of my colleague. Just to identify the fact that what, what these canisters are, is isolating fuel, so high-level radioactive materials from, from the environment, acknowledging the fact that all of this, well, I'm gonna say ninety-five percent of this material is owned by ACL. But I also wanted to point out that not a hundred percent of this material is from Chalk River. So it has been brought from other CNL sites, just to highlight that. And then further, I think it was during this, that my colleague from Armpryor made the comment around, nobody seems to know where it's going. So Nuclear Waste Management Organisation does have, is, is the entity that is responsible for finding a long-term permanent solution for all of Canada's high-level nuclear waste. And this organisation was created by Parliament about twenty years, I think it is twenty years, I think twenty-three, twenty, two thousand and three, is that twenty years? And I can recall when the organisation was first started, because at the time, it was, it was ACL. So anyway, the excitement at NWMO today is that when they started with twenty-three communities that had put their name forward to be the host for the DGR, to permanently store all of Canada's high-level waste, that twenty-three communities has been narrowed down to two. The exciting part about this is that the site will be selected in twenty-twenty-four. And then the planning for the CNSC licenses, the construction, and all of that. The two communities that are left right now are South Bruce in southwestern Ontario and Ignace in northwestern Ontario. And so once, once the site is selected and everything is put in place, like I said, the licensing will begin, and then site construction, everybody sitting down, will take about thirty-five years. Then we can start moving fuel into this facility. So it's a long ways off, and a lot of work to do between now and then, so. And I think that's the only comments I had.
Thank you. And member from Armpryor, please.
Thank you, Warden. To expand on that a little bit, for the canisters, there were six in place, and they brought, they manufactured or built six more for the fuel that's coming, and at our meeting, they didn't know at one point it would be going away. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. And seeing nothing further on that item, we'll move on to the Eastern Ontario Regional Network, please.
Warden, basically, two things. The new tower sites are going fairly well, and we are supporting the Seven and Seven Regional Housing Plan through the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And FCM?
I have no report.
Okay, thank you. I should add, FCM was the gracious host when the Wardens Caucus was in Ottawa. We used their headquarters as a place to meet, and we also had a very good exchange of ideas and needs, and they promised to continue to, to have discussion with us and make sure that our, our information was fed into the small-town rural section of, of FCM. So, and I, we were closely aligned, actually, when we, when we did talk. And Roma, please.
We continued our work, our work towards a strategic plan on the Thursday evening. On Friday, we had our board meeting, and items of interest in our cross-provence check-in were POA challenges in almost all zones, sharing services, regional waste management, growth opportunities for housing, water and wastewater, and municipal funding for hospitals. The majority of our board meeting focused on our upcoming Roma conference. Everybody knows, January twenty-first to twenty-third, at the Sheridan in Toronto, the theme of the conference is closer to home. We're urging people to arrive on Saturday, January twentieth, so each zone is going to have their own meeting on the Sunday morning, and we reviewed all the plenary sessions and keynote speakers in depth, and the Warden can attest to this, I mean, in depth, and we believe that we have arrived at some really excellent options for our delegates to enjoy the conference. Thank you, Warden.
Thank you. One of the challenges with sessions is there's not enough time, and so we end up with, I think the number is twenty-one, and we have twelve slots, something along those lines. So we had to end up combining some, and this isn't an accurate representation, but, you know, we combined paramedics and dog catching, to make sure we got, we got as much topic as we could. So that's not true, but it's something like that. It was two that were slightly connected, to try and get as much information out as possible, but I think when you see the program, you're gonna be very impressed with it. It's a very talented group of presenters with innovation, lots of innovation and ideas, so we're very proud to present it, and you'll get the information, I think you should have the information very soon, either this week or next week. And with that, we'll move to notice of motions. Seeing none, and written motions, and the member from Petawawa, please.
Thank you, Chair. With your permission, I'd like to postpone this and move this to a future date in light of some additional information that I was made aware of today, and I'd need a little extra time to amend my presentation, if that's okay.
Yes, I think we're fine with that. Thank you very much. And move to number seventeen, new business. The member from Deep River.
Thank you, Warden, Emo. I just, I was remiss in thanking Ree Watt for chairing the Operations Committee special meeting this morning before County Council, so I just wanted to identify that.
Thank you. We like pure people, you know, the Reeves, because we don't often chair meetings, we don't get, we don't get confused with our own, our own procedural bylaws at our home community, so he jumped right in there and took it over, a little surprised off the front end, but he handled it very well, so thank you to, to Keith.
And any other new business? Seeing none, confirmatory bylaw, please. If I could have mover and a seconder, that a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the council of the County of Renfrew at the meeting held on October twenty-five, twenty-twenty-three be now numbered, deemed and read three times and passed. That is bylaw number one-thirty-five dash twenty-three. So mover would be North Agona Wilberforce, seconder would be a member from Head, Claire Maraya. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you. And with that, I accept a motion to adjourn. And we'll go with the member from Petawawa and seconded by a member from Horton. Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? None? It's carried. Thank you very much, everybody, for your patience and your time.